We'll call the June nineteenth city council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer and the pledge and Commissioner Anderson's going to do the fact of the day, which will be the proclamation from Saturday.
Let us in some latitude of prayer. Our Father, the giver very good and perfect gift, the creator of all mankind, is once again that we come before your presence, calm with your holy Father with thanksgivings in our heart, thankful for the many blessings that have been stored upon us and its opportunity for us to serve, as servants of this city, this commitment, this city. May I also God that you would bless those that are in the chamber today, let them feel your spirit, a spirit of peace, as we come today to celebrate Juneteenth, one that was organized a hundred and fifty-nine years ago. Our heavenly Father, help us to celebrate this special occasion, and if we continue to celebrate it, to educate, that we will be able to live in a city where you had designed that all of us should live in harmony and in peace. In thy son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the angels through the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fun fact of the day, whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, and whereas our nation began on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, with signing of the Declaration of Independence, the most well-known statement and document, that the document being, we hold these truths to self-evident, that all men are created equal, that all are endowed by their Creator, with certain unattainable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and whereas as January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln signed, uh, signed the Emancipation Proclamation, stating that all persons held as slaves within any state, a designated part of the state, shall by be then, um, th- thenceforth and forever free, and whereas the information, um, proclamation made, that permanent, um, abolition of slavery, a Union War goal, and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all four million slaves as the Union, um, armies advanced, and whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, almost two and a half years later, Major General, uh, Gordon Gardner arrived in Gavisland Jack, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery, with the announcement, the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of, of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection, um, existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor. Their free men are advised to remain at their present homes and work for wages. They are informed that they will not, will not be allowed to collect a military post, and they will not be supported, um, either there or elsewhere, and we're in Texas, between the celebration of Juneteenth in eighteen sixty-six, with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings, as three families from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carried the Juneteenth celebration, uh, within then. Whereas as January first, nineteen eighty, Juneteenth became an official Texas state holiday, and whereas the day was recognized as a federal holiday in two thousand twenty-one, with the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act was signed into law. Now, therefore, I, uh, Brian Nelson, the mayor of the city of Apopka, Florida, do hereby recognize June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as the Juneteenth in the city of Apopka, and encourage all citizens to observe this date with your appropriate programs, activities, and reflections.
Thank you. All right, approval of the minutes. Motion to approve, or any corrections?
I just had a quick question for Attorney Shepherd. There was a resident that reached out, and, and you did provide a, a commentary on her opinion, and it was in reference to speaking right at one thirty, and they were, their verbiage was not recognized in these minutes. Can you give, um, your interpretation as to why, and, and legal capacity as to why?
Sure. Were you talking about what happened before the last meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I forgot about that. The, uh, meeting, meeting minutes are to reflect the beginning and whatever happens after a notice meeting is, uh, comes to order, and reflects the action taken, and sometimes, depending on the type of minutes are, are done, the commentary and all this stuff, that's where we had the discussion, and we sent a memo about the various types of minutes. The whole idea of it is to comply with sunshine law as a legal requirement, and so by definition, if it's prior to the meeting, it's not a required element of the minutes, and it would be confusing and if not improper, to include stuff that's prior to the actual meeting occurring. So if you were coming to raise an objection, as was the case, about whether the meeting is legal, the time to bring it is, the meeting is commenced, be recognized, either, whether immediately or during the public period or whatever, and say, here's the reason I think this is a problem. Or, as I point out, you could send an email to the council, you could send an email to the C A O, you could send an email to the police, if they thought, you know, there was an improper notice, the clerk, or, uh, all those kinds of things, but, but in order to be in the minutes, you have to be in the meeting, and that's what's the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the minutes, as read?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Any changes to the agenda? Jacob? Okay, all right, proclamations. Boy, we got a great group, folks, this is awesome. Thanks for coming out tonight. Going to read the proclamation, the forty-ninth year, the end of Vietnam War, and this proclamation reads as stated, "Whereas April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, marks the forty-ninth anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War and the start of the exodus of several million Vietnamese people out of Vietnam, after the South Vietnamese capital of Saigon fell to communists on April thirtieth, nineteen seventy-five. And whereas for many Vietnamese and veterans who were directly involved in the war, and Vietnamese Americans who have settled in the United States, the Vietnam War was a tragedy full of suffering and the loss of American, Vietnamese, and Southeast Asian lives. And whereas during the Vietnam War, over fifty-eight thousand American service members died, and a hundred and fifty thousand were wounded. In addition, two hundred and seventy-five thousand South Vietnamese Armed Forces soldiers died during the war. For the Americans who served in Vietnam and survived unspeakable horrors, coming home offered its own kind of trauma. Overall, Vietnam veterans were met with none of the fanfare that was received by the World War Two Greatest Generation. And where starting in nineteen seventy-five and lasting through the mid nineteen nineties, multiple ways of Vietnamese refugees began leaving Vietnam, eventually being resettled in the United States. And whereas in order to serve their community and prosper in America, Vietnamese Americans founded and established thriving Vietnamese-American commercial districts throughout the United States. And whereas the city of Apopka is home to many Vietnamese-Americans, and significant contributions have been made by Vietnamese-Americans through their cultural, religious, and political lives. Whereas it's taken nearly twenty years after the end of the war for America to honor its Vietnam veterans. The dedication of Vietnam Veterans Memorial in nineteen eighty-two began the process, but many identify the Gulf War of nineteen ninety, ninety-one, with its national flag-waving, yellow ribbon, cultural mobilization, and the grand celebrations of a successful campaign as e- ending the Vietnam Syndrome. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, mayor of the city of Apopka, who, who, uh, proclaimed June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Vietnam Remembrance Day in the city of Apopka, and encourage all citizens, businesses, and institutions to remember the countless lives lost in the Vietnam War and its aftermath, to honor our veterans that served courageously in the war, and to continue the determination in advocating for society that respects the human and civil rights of citizens of all nations." And with that, would somebody like to come forward? Yes. No, what you, we'll say a few words, then we'll get a, we'll get a picture with everybody. Yes.
Thank you very much. We very honored to be here this evening. Uh, we were here a few years back. And City of Apopka really, really, really support us. We love the city. We come back with, uh, Commissioner Diane, and see the clerk, we try to get the proclamation for those that really die for us, so we have a freedom to live in. Not for so much of us as today, but for the younger generation grow up that do not know what the mother countries are, and how the customs work. So we try to carry on this legacy. So City of Apopka really support us, we do appreciate so much, the mayor, all of the city councilman, all the, the whole, um, people, impression people in, 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 in this city of my, uh, of Apopka. Um, we do have some people come in today, some of the, some of our, our veterans, um, some are traveled very far, Miami, uh, Jacksonville, uh, some have come from Atlanta to, to witness this thing. And it's very, very important to us that we continue to carry, carry on with this, for this, uh, situation that we have, and we want to move better in the future. Um, I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry, okay? Uh, but, uh, tonight, I want to introduce you to the president of the Vietnam, uh, Vietnam in Orlando, the resident, Thuan. Okay, she has a few words, and then I have a gentleman over there, he is a president of the United States.
Oh, wow.
That, that he came here this evening. So I pass her a few words, and again, you don't know how much we thank you for all of you, and we'll, we appreciate it very, very much. I have a few words for her.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thuan Lin Huen. I am the president of Vietnamese-American community of Central Florida. We are so honored to be here tonight, and we thank you so much for your guide to give it to us, the opportunity to remember the day, uh, we call that April, the Black April thirtieth, the day that our loved one is sacrificed for our country. And again, we thank you so much for City of Apopka, it, uh, recognizing this day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Thoy, please. Mr. Thoy is, uh, president of the United States, Vietnamese community, okay?
Uh, good evening, um, City of Apopka mayor, and all the commissioner, and all, and, and all the people in the, uh, city of Apopka here. Again, as you know, April nineteen seventy-five, we call it Black April. That days, we remember fifty thousand U S social workers, U N action, and two more hundred thousand Vietnamese social workers, U N action too. And we are remember, every people, every social, fighting, take the freedom and democracy for our country. And today, after forty-nine years, and we came to America, and we said, thank you so much, the for government and people, American citizen here, and half us, the, we will rebuild a new life. But further, we wish, all of you, and inclusive with the government, we try to fight in with the communists. This is the bad country, the bad regime to all the people live in the world, and hopefully, every people, United States government, and all of you, will be fighting freedom for everyone in the world, in the global, and we have a peace and happiness worthy in our lives. And again, thank you very much, mayor, and all commission here, and you do proclamation for us. This is very important to us. And again, thank you everyone, thank you all the United States, thank you government to have our country fighting freedom and democracy, and democracy for our people, and thanks again.
Thank you. If we'll, we'll get, yeah. Come on down, we'll get a picture, and we'll take some of that, like, all, all your, all folks, come on down. Okay, I'll be right there.
John, they want to take a photo here.
I've got a photo here.
Yes.
Okay, I've got a photo over here. Everybody, yeah, we, we face, the light facing this way. Oh, and everybody, the light up here and look at this guy. This way, I've got, this is where we stand here, we'll look down, but, yeah.
Two, two, no, I'll be here soon. Thank you, thank you, yeah. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you for me. Thank you, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
See, oh, I don't, yeah. Well? Yeah, okay. We'll do it right now? The mayor?
And then go to the news.
The June 20th Committee of Combat Police, and, uh, it's, uh, Sister Morris or Kiomi, which one are going to do the speak? I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
I feel like a comic card. Okay, go ahead. A picture, yes.
You sit right here. I'm gonna just have you to stand up.
Lot of picture taking.
All right, Monique.
All right, good evening to the mayor, commissioners, chamber members, everyone, City of Apopka. We are the Juneteenth Committee, and we want to just thank you for your support. Um, Commissioner Nestor wasn't there, but he supported us, so we want to say thank you. We, we had our first Freedom Day, um, parade. It's going to get larger, because it started out just like Martin Luther King Parade did, it's going to get larger, but I want to thank you for your participation. We want to thank you as a committee, we have our, um, our visionary behind all this is Kiomi, um, Jones from Transform Outreach. Um, I want to say thank you to the city, um, Apopka Police Department, and Sergeant Creaser is not here, and I want to say thank you to him. Give Sergeant Creaser a hand, um, they threw him out there. He's new, um, and he, he took the place of, um, Sergeant Wiggins, but he did an excellent job, and, um, Deputy Chief Miller, and, um, um, what, the chief is still out there? But anyway, the chief, we want to thank everybody for everything that they, they did to make sure that it was success for us, and also Orange County Sheriff's Department, so it's also going to continue every year, so you're going to see us back every year, so we just want everybody to come together and embrace this, this, this. It's not a black thing, it's not a white thing, it's everybody. Everybody coming together, loving one another. So we want to thank you again for all that you have done for us and your continued support to make this bigger next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, presentation. Where's Stephen Krebs? Ah, there he is, Stephen Krebs. The Apokka Youth Council 2023-24 Year in Recap.
All right, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, everybody. How y'all doing today this evening? All right, so my name is Stephen Krebs. I do special projects here with the city. And one of those special projects I have an honor to be able to do is the Apokka Youth Council. This was our 23, 2023, 2024 Youth Council. They, as you remember, they started back in September. We, we had them come in here and present themselves, say their names. And we've had a great year of doing community outreach. And we're going to go through some of those, some of those things now. So here's our year in review. Once again, our council is made up of five members. Mia Perez and Terriano and Olivia Young unfortunately couldn't be here with us this evening. They are part of the Apokka High School Beta Club, and we're at a convention. They thought they were going to make it back in town this evening, but hit some, hit some traffic delays. So unfortunately, they're not going to be able to join us. But I do have Alfred Luna, Brienne Protasio, and Beatrice Salim all here. Some of the events that we did this year were things like the Mobility Week Bike Event. There's the Eco Bike Ride around Lake Apokka. Our, a couple of our youth got up very early in the morning. They met me here at 6:00 AM to help me load up the, the car and get out there and be ready to go for the, all those that participated in that event, handing out water and nutrition bars and, and other snacks and, and keeping our, our bikers motivated out there. Then there was the Apokka Recycles Day. Beatrice was able to be out at that one and helped us recycle 4,255 pounds of electronics and 400 pounds of paper. That was another one that took place back in the fall and was really appreciated by our, our city. We look forward to doing it again. The Race Across America Preparation, that was, we got together with the VFW Post and were able to go and, and help them get ready for that event. The biggest project that our youth took on this year was the Celebrating Legends of Apokka booklet, which they worked on in researching some of Apokka's legends, putting this book together, finding out some great information about them so that we could really honor some of those who've gone before us. And as you can see, their efforts for that book has raised, the last I counted yesterday was $1,420 for the museum expansion so far. And then there was the Celebrating Apokka's Legends Event, where they were actually able to go and read and remember, help remember those legends who, who've gone before us. Did a fantastic job with that. It was a great event. And finally, the last one that they participated in was the Community Day in Neighborhood Lakes Trailhead as the celebration of the completion of the, the 429. That was another early morning for them. They were, they were troopers up there and smiles and sharing information about the, the trails and visions we have for the trails in that area. And now, without any further ado, I'm going to let them all speak. And they want to share with you a little bit about what they learned from the council this year. Again, unfortunately Mia was not able to, to make it. She's got some, some of her pictures up there that she was able to share as, as you can see, some of her future plans.
Hello, I am Alfred Luna. I am a graduate of Forest Lake Academy. And with my time within the Youth Council, I was able to learn a variety of skills such as research skills, communication skills, time management skills. And I really do appreciate the many different events that we participated in.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brian Protasio, and I am also a graduate of Forest Lake Academy. After being on the Apokka Youth Council this year, I gained more confidence in my ability as a leader. And I believe I have Mr. Krebs to thank for that. It was truly an honor to work with him this year.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beatrice Salim. I just graduated from Apokka High School. And this was my fourth, my fourth year in the Apokka Youth Council, so I've been here for a long time. It was a big chapter of this part of my life of being in high school, and I will forever treasure it. I really enjoyed being just part of the community. I come from Brazil, so being part of like a city, like a, a close knit city was really special to me. I learned a lot about responsibility, partnership, and just community. And I'll forever take these life lessons from going forward. Yeah, so I thank Dr. Jackson, our previous leader, and Stephen Krebs for giving me this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, and then finally, Olivia wasn't, she wasn't able to be here with us, but she did send me a message that she would like me to read. And that was as a part of Apokka Youth Council, I have learned more about every aspect of my city, but my favorite part was learning about our community of people who live here. Whether it be through events celebrating Apokka, discussions about Apokka's history, or even simple conversations with everyday people. AYC has opened the doors to countless opportunities to learn about our city, but also learn from the people in our community. So those were a couple of words from Olivia there. All right, so that was our, our youth. Again, thank you all so much for your support with the Apokka Youth Council.
We have to grab a picture then. I hope Marta hears.
Great.
Grab another picture, Marta.
She's, she's in the back.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and set up. And just a final picture and short plug to, for any of you all that know any 11th or 12th graders in the area, the applications for next year's Apokka Youth Council are open.
And Mr. Krebs, before you run away, I, I'm still concerned about our youth council attending the Florida League of Cities Convention. Other youth councils will be present. And, and once again, I would like for Apokka Youth Council to participate in that convention as well.
Absolutely. Actually, this coming year for the Florida League of Cities Conference, since it is in Hollywood, Florida, they're actually not doing a portion for the Youth Council. They're having a summit in September, which I've already talked to, September, October, which I've already spoken with the mayor that our youth will be attending, and that'll be in Dilliam, Florida.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. All right, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Rada Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here tonight to give a brief, some brief updates on the capital projects we've been working on in the department. I know there's a lot of interest around these amenity upgrades that we've been working on. So just give you a quick update on where we're at. First off, here's a list of the, the larger active projects we're working on. You see, there's quite a list. We are excited to finally be moving out of the, wrapping up the design process on a good portion of these. And we'll be moving into construction in late 2024. So just to go through the list, we have the Apokka Skate Park Pump Track, which is a CRA funded project, tennis pickleball facility, Phase One, Northwest Recreation Complex Inclusive Playground and Century Garden, Northwest Recreation Complex Exit Road and Parking, which is going to be right there at the new inclusive playground, Northwest Recreation Complex New Multipurpose Soccer Fields, Phase One, lighting upgrades and lighting additions at the Northwest Recreation Complex, the Kentland Nelson Park Gazebro Rebuild Project, and an Ethan Highland Pocket Park, which is also a CRA project. First up, we have the Skate Park Pump Track. We are working with a company, American Ramp Company, as a design build on this. As I mentioned, it is a CRA project, budgeted $500,000. The initial design is complete. You can see it up there on the screen. There are going to be a few tweaks to this as we make sure we stay under that $500,000 budget. Next steps up on this project, we're in the process of nailing down a date for a little neighborhood meeting at the Fran Carlton Center, which will be where the skate park is located. Final design approval, and then construction is tentatively slated for the later part of 2024. So we're excited to get this thing rolling. Our tennis pickleball facility, if you remember, we split this into three phases in our Rec Impact Fee Capital Budget. We're working with a company called Hellis Construction. We have a budget of, I apologize, it was typically $1.1 million. The initial design is complete on this as well. We will also be scheduling a neighborhood meeting at the Northwest Recreation Complex to provide information to any of the public that'd like to come out. Next steps will be final design approval, and again, construction is slated tentatively for late 2024. This is estimated at like a six to nine week construction window. So once they get started, they'll be moving quick. Our Northwest Recreation Complex Inclusive Playground and Century Garden, we're working with Company Rec Services. This is in the cap, Capital Budget for Parks and Rec at $1,060,000. We do have the, the final design with a few last little tweaks. Some renderings are up there on the screen. We're excited. It's a nice, large upgrade to what we currently have out there. The, the playground equipment is dated. This is also an inclusive playground, so it'll allow for, for use by all. Next steps, just that final design approval. And again, late 2024 construction. Lead times on playgrounds right now are around 24 weeks to build and then install. This is an overlay of the planned Northwest Recreation Exit Road and Parking. In the purple and orange are the locations of the Inclusive Playground and Century Garden. The exit road will run along the fence line to the school. It will also include two new parking areas. These will be grass parking with asphalt paved loops to, to access them. This will provide a lot of additional parking, parking for the playground, and then also for the larger events, the larger tournaments, amphitheater events that are going on. Provides another exit access from, from the parking lot back there, which can jam up pretty good at Gate One. Multipurpose Soccer Fields, Phase One. I won't speak too much on this. I can update you that we do, on Sunday, did release an active bid to solicit contractors to help build these fields. Phase One is budgeted for $500,000. The bid will close on July 18th, and from there, we'll be coming back to you that next council meeting to award a vendor, hopefully, so. Next couple are some LED light upgrades. Pads four, five, and six are currently, actually last week started upgrading from the old haylight to the LED light. This was budgeted in our current capital budget for Parks and Recreation at $550,000. Starting in July, pads 13 and 14 will have lights added. There were no lights in those fields currently, so we're excited to get lights added on those fields, and that'll increase our capacity at nights. Kentland Nelson Park Gazebro Rebuild, also working with Rep Services. The plan for this, as discussed at, at one of the last meetings, was to move more into a, a small amphitheater structure at the park, since the park is utilized for a lot of community events. These are just some samples of what those amphitheater structures look like. We do have $250,000 budgeted for that. And as soon as we get the raised portion designed, we'll be able to move forward with that program, or that project. And finally, we have Ethan Highland Pocket Park. This is a CRA project. The budget for this is $105,000. This will include a playground structure and some basic park amenities, benches, things like that, water fountain. Next steps up, we'll be working with Community Development Department to finalize the plat of the property. We also have to demolish the existing structure that is on the property. It's an old maintenance complex. And then we'll finish designing the playground, and, and construction will come shortly after that. That, some brief overview of where we're at with our capital projects. We're excited to be moving through this list here and, and starting to get things moving construction wise. And it'll be fast and furious the last six months of this year.
Questions?
One quick question, and this isn't a reference to this, it was just, I run a lot out at the Northwest Rec a lot. And we, I guess expedited the fencing around the amphitheater. Why did we do that?
The, the fence, the new fencing? Yeah, so that was, was expedited. We budgeted additional money this year for amphitheater upgrades, and that was the next thing on the list of that phased plan to, to continue the fence line.
Okay. There's, on the northwest section of that, there's a very large gate that, for larger vehicles or whatever. And right in front of that gate, there's a tree planted, so we may want to move that.
Yeah, we're aware of that, that tree there, and that'll be relocated. We're also, in the plan, those gates are going to remain open unless an event is happening. So it won't restrict any access as far as that goes.
Mr. Smith?
I'm fine.
Mr. Velazquez?
I'm good.
Mr. Anderson? Well, the, the 800 pound gorilla, though, has not been talked about. So tell us the, our, obviously it's not a capital project, but we hope it's a capital project. Can you speak to the July 19th date?
Yes, so we were notified by the county that we have a tentative date for presenting our TDT Arc Grant application. That will be, let me pull up, just make sure I got you the right date and time. That'll be Friday, July 19th, from between 9:00 and noon. At that presentation, it'll be a 30-minute presentation, well, 15-minute presentation with 15-minute question and answer. From there, the tentative scoring for the Grant Arc Committee is set for August 16th, which is also a Friday, also from 9:00 to noon. So we get through the presentation, they'll come back and do a scoring of all the presentations and applications. So on that Friday, 16th date, we should have a good idea of where we're at. And then from there, it would be awarded by the, by the county that October date.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
So what, sorry, what dates? I was going to have that in my commissioner's report to ask for follow-up.
July 19th.
So July 19th is our presentation, tentative presentation date, and August 16th is the tentative scoring date that the committee will meet and score.
16th is the scoring.
Correct.
Okay. All right, super. Well, thank you, Raddley.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Susan?
Albert McKemmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apokka. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor. On a weekly basis, it would appear our mayor becomes more delusional, or perhaps more senile, or maybe a combination of both. He could care less about procedure, he could care less about due process, he could care less about being truthful and transparent. Maybe it's about time we took him up on that offer of the drug test. You remember that, Brian? But I would suggest we don't, we don't use a piss test. I would prefer a sample here, here.
Now, you need to talk to this council, not to me directly. You understand?
In any case, a test, if it was anything like the water test that was supplied on Golden Gem Road, there was no control sample. The water test in Golden Gem Road ponds was taken in May. The incident occurred back in January. Today, I sent Brian Nelson, Susan Bone, and the Commissioners an email regarding the process required to challenge tonight's meeting. Susan, please record it in the minutes that the city failed to reply, that tonight, I believe that I followed the city attorney's directions as how to challenge the legitimacy of this meeting. So I would like that recorded in the minutes, please. So I would like that recorded in the minutes, please. Does the mayor believe he can vote on a motion to rescind a censure that was brought against him? Since it would be unlawful for him to vote, Diane Velasquez, our vice mayor, must chair that motion. A tie in that vote, then she would carry the motion. Let it be noted in the minutes that I challenged the mayor's assertion that he has the right to be chair on a motion or that he has the right to vote on a motion where he wants to rescind something that had happened at a previous council meeting. It's disappointing our commissioners seem to have gone blind and deaf and our ignorant residents who helped put you on the dais. With a respect to last meeting, Commissioner Velasquez, you suggested that documents I presented to you were different to your own copy of the oath of office. I think it's a reasonable question that we require to answer that and how that occurred. I did email you to see if we could resolve the issue, but you never answered me. Neither did you reply to my offer to provide you with documents the city supplied me with that shows Brian Nelson is a documented liar. Only Commissioner Nestor chose to reply. Now, Ms. Diane, let me ask you a hypothetical question.
You're speaking to the council, not to individual member.
If a lead detective on a homicide investigation was given access to government documents that could prove reckless endangerment or negligence and later an event occurred with serious consequences and it became apparent that that detective had failed without good reason to investigate the rose reports, what do you think would happen to their career? Might even a DA consider a prosecution? For the city and residents to become adversarial, it's not a good example to set for future residents. It's been my contention for some time, what we need are workshops to bring us together. How is it I, with out your access to city documents, can find 150 pages of documented fiction supplied by your mayor? These include his assertion that there was only 50 million gallons of water in the retention ponds. The city's own documentation to the DEP suggests there was 108 million gallons. The city's expert suggested there's 300 million gallons. What I would like to know is where did those other 190 million gallons come from? It came from runoff that was contaminated with toxins, DDT, cyanide, arsenic, all sorts of things. You are an ass.
Please, in case you, just in case you would like to jot down notes.
Mayor, commissioners and platform guests, my name is Jaret Schofield. I reside at 1489 Lake Opal Drive.
And at Roscoe Smith, 1477 Lake Opal Drive.
Nathan Phelps, 1471 Lake Opal Drive.
The reason why we're here is because we've taken different avenues on different timelines to try to remedy the problem. Initially, I'd spoken to Mr. Earp at the Public Works sites off of Cleveland. He redirected me to speak with Mr. Chambers, only for Mr. Chambers to tell me it was a my problem. I reached out to Brockman Site Development located in Sanford. This will have more meaning as I present to you. The gentleman I spoke with was Mr. James Huff. He redirected me to Mr. Green, only for Mr. Green to redirect me to someone that works for my home, Mr. Tinson. At the end of the day, I felt like I was just being insulted, not realizing I was being redirected to a different staff member. So what I did, I asked for feedback because Mr. Earp said, oh, I'd come out to your home. He had given me a day. Fortunately, I was able to work, but I invested into a Ring camera. According to my Ring camera, didn't see any activity in my backyard. So I called back and I said, if you use some form of a drone, give me update, give me your findings, let me know what you determined. As of today, June 19th, 2024, I haven't gotten any feedback. So I reached out to my neighbors and we decided we needed to come together because they're experiencing what I'm experiencing and their path was the exact same path, but on a different timeline, we were being redirected. I'm here to plead our case for Lake Opal Estates. I have a PowerPoint and I've given you a hard copy, just in case you would like to jot down some notes. The cause and effect of Emerson Point, phase one, Apopka, Florida. I have a picture of South Apopka, our subdivision, or you can say community, is located in South... Oh, uh-oh, I didn't mean to go back. We're gonna owe me this. It's located in South Apopka, but my address says Apopka. Lake Opal Estates, this is the entry. As you can see, they're hills, they're small, but they're hills. When the development was built, walls were put to divide the homes, to partition each home from the other, which was a necessity and that goes along with what I'm going to end up saying. Right here, the first slide is a picture, and I do not own the copy of the photos, is a copy of Lake Opal. The blue area is my home. Right behind my home, you will see is nothing but greenery. Currently, that's Emerson Point. If you look at the second slide, it's a wider, more enlarged view. You see 0710, 706, 90680, that's Lake Opal, the street which we reside on. Those are our homes. Right behind our home was greenery. That's why we're here. The greenery was the attraction, but because the greenery has been removed, we are having a major problem. This is a picture of my home. Once again, as you can see, it's on an incline, it's a hill. This is a picture of my backyard and neighboring yard. Once again, you will see greenery. It's a, this is a secured foundation of the backyard and neighboring homes that was highly decorated with nature, including a view of Lake Opal. This is a side view of wall, my wall. Once again, the whole purpose is to show you the elevation, how everything was stabled. We'd come home to discover our backyard had been altered. This is the initial phase of Emerson Point, phase one. The removal of the greenery behind 1489, I just chose to use my address, but their address is the same thing happened instead of giving you multiple pictures and neighboring homes. This is them removing more and more of the greenery. This was the final clearing stage of Emerson Point. This is what it looked like, nothing. I didn't learn until I'd come home after raining and as a result of the removal of the greenery and restructuring of the land formation, the land form has been damaged. When it rains, the dirt is rerouted down here to Emerson Point's retention pond. This is a safety hazard and has created a level of uncertainty of the state of our homes. As you can see, the dirt goes downward, it doesn't stay on our property. We're concerned about our investment today and tomorrow. It's a washout.
When did all this happen?
It's going right now.
Okay, so Emerson, why would it be the first?
Emerson is right behind us. The dirt is being rerouted into Emerson Point's retention pond. Our home is up higher. Let me go back. I was...
Hold on. No, just, it just interests.
Continue.
Emerson Point, phase one, oh, I guess that's with an E.
The phase one is when they removed everything.
Okay.
Okay? And that's when...
When was that?
Last year.
Last year, okay.
And I reached out to Brockman and I did speak with different people and all they did was redirect me to a different person. And they would say, what did the first person say? What did the first person say? And then they would say, well, we had come out, we had come out. So I asked, would you give me a date and time when you came out? So I checked my Ring camera, no one had been out. So I called back and I said, according to my Ring camera, I didn't have any visitation. Did you use a drone? Then they said, we'll get back with you. Then, once again.
Well, I'll make you this commitment, I'll have...
Hold on, let me continue, show you, I'm not finished. And this is Emerson Point, right behind my home.
Okay.
And this is where our property is going downward, going downward, and it's being deposited into Emerson Point Retention Pond. And that's why I said, as an example, when it rains, it pours into Emerson Point Retention Pond. We need help. Y'all have anything to say? Thank you for...
Can I get a, if you, I don't have anybody from public services, I don't take care tonight.
I spoke with Mr. Earp from Public Works. He was the first person I spoke to, only for him to have Mr. Chambers, only for him to have Mr. Chambers call me, so...
Does he have your contact information?
And all he stated was, it's not his problem, it was a my problem, so that's why we're here today.
Susan has it.
Susan has it.
Okay, good. You got your contact information on the card?
Yes.
Number and email address?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you so much and I look forward to, we look forward to hearing from you.
You got it. Thank you, ma'am.
And this is the... Okay.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. Mayor, commissioners, we look to you to help us grow smarter. When you look at our roads, you look at our sidewalks, you look at our reclaimed water restrictions, you look at our school overcrowding, we need to do it differently, we need to do it better. We must do a better job in our staffing. When you look at the fact that 15 of our employees got a 30% plus raise, 29 over 20% and 24 over 15%, that's nearly 1 in 5 of every employee got a significant bump in pay. No objection to the bump in pay, the question is, how many good candidates did we lose because we weren't competitive? How many people did we lose because we weren't competitive? How many staff did we lose? Do we conduct exit and post-exit interviews? Exit interviews are kind of like just a basis point, because if you're asking Rod why he's leaving, I'm leaving for a better job and we need better pay and it's closer to home. When you talk to him in a post-exit interview, 90 to 180 days after, you find out the real reason Rod left. And Rod left, that SOB I worked for, we didn't have the supplies we need, they will tell you because they're not banking on you for a reference. Industry does annual surveys. In my industry, rehab, we did them quarterly, sometimes monthly, and if we lost a key personnel, we did it daily, just to make sure we stayed competitive. That's how competitive the rehab industry was. I've encouraged you in the budget process, as I did last year again this year, to meet individuals in each department. You need to do a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. We need to determine if we have the right staff. We need to determine whether or not we have the right number of staff. Do we have the equipment, supplies, materials necessary to do the job the way it's supposed to be done? I just glanced through the expenses and if I'm wrong in it, I apologize, but in 5224, we paid $120 for 500 business cards. You can get a quality business card for 20 to 40 dollars. We need to look at everything we're spending. NFPA standards say we need 1.53 firefighters for every thousand residents. That equates to 90 firefighters. For Department of Labor indicates that we need 2.53 police officers, which comes to 149 police officers per... And that doesn't factor in the 35 square miles that we cover when the largest cities in the county, we need to have additional staff. No one wants to see a critical event be the trigger for our police department to staff to where they need to be. RFP for Northwest Recreation Complex, I looked at, it's very vague, doesn't expel out things. You look at, at the time it was built, 38,000 residents, four tennis courts, four volleyball courts, 12 baseball softball fields, 16 multipurpose fields. Today with 159,000, that should be six tennis courts, six volleyball courts, 18 softball and baseball fields and 24 multipurpose fields. The RFP should address at least a minimum of two tennis courts, two volleyball courts, six baseball and softball fields and eight multipurpose fields, just to stay pace, not counting the skate park. It's glad to see some of that stuff coming onboard here. And the aspect of the pickleball courts and skate park, we need to do it, we need to do it now. How can we effectively bid when the bid has no, there's nothing, it's vague if you look at it? We cannot fix yesterday. We must not replicate our past failures. We must stop kicking the can down the road. We can't just count on new residents covering what we need now and what needs to go down the road. You need to look no further than the valley and fire station number six, $2 million more to us. The lack of due diligence, construction, maintenance in Golden Gem Pond is going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I guess I'm running out of time, but at any rate, we need to do it better and we need to do it now.
Stacy Bryant, 791 Princeton Drive, Claremont, Florida. I'm a pastor looking for a church facility to rent or buy in Apopka to move our church that is currently in Winter Garden to the Apopka area. So that answers a lot of questions about why I come to these meetings and I'm not currently a resident. At the last meeting, I was very sick and I ended up at a fire station. Instead of going to the hospital, I was trying to avoid that and I ended up going to the emergency room anyway. But tonight, I want to say a special thank you to Lieutenant Renee Beasley and to paramedic Louis Rivera for their quality of service and just quality of care. Thank you doesn't seem like enough, but I really appreciate both of them. Tonight I have firsthand knowledge to share with you in hopes of affecting change. I would ask you to stop the stall tactics with raised negotiations and honor the men and women who hold our Apopka community together, our firefighters. A community is home. A community is where you know people have your back and they'll stand up for you no matter what. You never want to be in a place to need a firefighter, but when you do, you're really grateful that they're there. Before the last meeting, the last time I needed a firefighter was 21 and a half years ago and we needed a firefighter in the worst possible way on that day. My dad was killed instantly in an automobile accident on the Florida Turnpike. And I know that Apopka did not service that accident, but they still handle these types of things every day in the course of their job. So with that, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit emotional, I'm not trying to be graphic with you, but I want to describe to you what my family went through. My dad was killed instantly and had to be cut out of the car. The turnpike was closed down for three hours both ways because the scene was so difficult to clean up. I know that that sounds gruesome, I could tell you more specifics, but I would become very emotional. It's been 21 years, there's been a lot of time there. The next day, we had a visitor at our door. My parents owned a business in downtown Winter Garden and one of the firefighters that serviced the scene of the accident came to check on us, just to make sure we were okay. Wanted to stop by and just make sure that we were doing all right and this ended up being a regular thing for him. One month later, three months later, six months, this went on for two years. It wasn't until around the third or fourth visit that I realized that that day was very difficult for him as well. He was struggling with what he had seen and he was struggling with how our lives had changed forever. In an instant, it could happen to anyone in this room, it could happen to anyone on the dais. So my question to you on the dais is if your world came crashing down like mine did, would you be able to look these firefighters in their face, knowing how you've treated them over the last year? Could you look them in the face, knowing how you disrespected them? They helped you on your most difficult day, showing you their true character and integrity. What would you do one month later, three months later, six months later? You see, they're going to continue to carry the weight of Apopka on their shoulders, doing the right thing, even when the wrong thing is being done to them. They're still going on. They're still going on calls. And if a call came in, it's Nelsons, it's Velazquez, it's Anderson, it's Smith, it's Nesta. Would you fear that they wouldn't show up? Would you suddenly realize the power trip that you had been on in not giving them their raise? Giving everybody in the city a raise but them. It's time to do the right thing, it's time to respect your people, and it's time that they deserve their raises. Thank you.
Leroy Bell.
Leroy Bell, Mark Helen. Good evening. I want to start with this Juneteenth. Juneteenth, just to set the record straight, the proclamation, the emancipation proclamation was signed in eighteen sixty-three. It wasn't just free the slaves, just free them, it was to free them so they could fight for the Confederacy. Texas, it took two years later for them to find out that they was free. I beg to differ today, because as some of us in this room today seem to don't even know that. And we still, it's slaved in our minds to this very, this very administration that we're standing before. Last meeting, or meeting before, we had a state representative came to this podium and stood up and was bragging about the legislation that they passed up in Tallahassee. One of them was the heat law, where it stopped people from having breaks in the shade and drinking water. He also was one of the, not the architect, but one of the, one of the votes that voted for Ron DeSantis, not teaching slavery in school, taking slavery out. You mentioned anything about slavery, he said it make little white kids feel guilty. You can't say gay in school, it's erasing the history. I'm confused, because that very same man that stood before us is trying to be re-elected. And he's sending out a flyer saying that who's on his committee for reelection. And it seems to be everybody on the diocese just trying to get him re-elected, except Commissioner Nesta. I'm confused. We gonna help this man continue to erase the black history? Come in here dressed up in African attire, and then we turn around, erase history, and then we turn around and celebrate Juneteenth. Do that make sense? Do that make sense? No, it don't make sense. What makes sense is represent the people, not this administration, because this administration don't care nothing about you. Nothing about me, nothing about people of color. And it seems like the people of color is the ones that empowering this, from Tallahassee on down to that chair. You don't like to hear the end word, but this man raised up with a friend sitting on the front row. One of the main men to use is end word. But that's fine. But what I'm trying to tell you is this, if you free your mind, you're behind a father.
Please, Woodham.
Hey, it's Woodham, forty-seventh East Magnolia Street. I come to you not again because of a Golden Gem Road incident. I do not believe that the true reports are coming out to the citizens of this community. I've set back for the last four weeks. I watched what was going on up here in the city, and I've also been studying. Your gentleman works for the city, I responded to what I said last council meeting a month ago, said that the water was treated to what DEP expected it to be. He was correct, but without any rebuttal, I was able to do. That water sat there for almost two years. It went stagnant. Not only that, God created the circle of life, that's the way everything works. Within the first five months of that pond being existed, omelet catfish started entering through bird feces. Turtles lived in that pond. Gators lived in that pond. Hadpods lived in that pond to feed the omelet catfish. Before long, we had an environment there that was alive. It was created by God above. And you know, I'm telling you the truth, God can work miracles. But one miracle can't work fixed, it's stupidity. You can't fix it. When that sink, when it opened up, that water didn't go through sand and filter itself. Your experts, y'all paid, verified that. It went straight into what they called the Bellevue Aquifer. That's the shallowest water that runs from north to south into the Wakaba River Basin. That water is contaminated. When it went in, fish, algae, pollution, feces, gators, turtles entered our drinking water. And you told the people, oh, it's okay, it's treated. If it's treated so well, why do we irrigate our golf courses in our, uh, roadsides with reclaimed water? It's non-potable. The health department would throw you all in jail if you started giving people reclaimed water to drink. They'd shut us down. So it wasn't safe. But you said, oh, it's okay. It was an act of God, that was not an act of God. One-third of the dirt that was taken out there was too much, the engineer said that. We dug down way past what they recommended us digging. We got down into the hardpan at Weekend, a structure that's been there for millions of years. We did that, not God. We put a liner in there that man-made, that failed, because its base, its foundation was not strong enough to hold the millions of gallons of water up. And we are the ones that injected it into what our children drink. Yeah, over time, it will clear itself up, because water's constantly flowing underground. It wasn't God, that was not an act of God.
Valerie Spoken. Spoken, yeah, I'm sorry. Spoken, I'm sorry.
Um, I just, I didn't, I just came here for the Juneteenth originally, but since they had the open card, I do want to say that I am a part of the Juneteenth Committee, but that's not why I'm up here. I'm up here because I'm opening a soul food restaurant right here on Fifth Street, just like Mama Soul Food and Wings. And, um, I wanted to say that I'm a teacher, I've been a teacher for five years. My mom is a retired law enforcement officer, she just walked out. Know she gonna be upset if she missed me talking. Um, my oldest daughter is an attorney for DCF. Uh, my son is a junior in college, um, and my baby, um, has the honor rolls at her young age. I said all that to say, um, it doesn't matter what we do to become educated people or upstanding citizens, sometimes we still run into trouble, and I'm saying this, and I'm talking to everybody, but Mr. Nesta, um, helped me with teaching me, telling me about the CRA program. I haven't tapped into that quite yet, but he did tell me about that, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, you don't know this, I didn't want to bother you, but I've been having some trouble with people keep calling code enforcement, so it's been hindering some of my growth and process. I've, I started, I told my mom that I would open a restaurant in January and my, set my grand opening date to July seventh, and I've been catching hell from some city code enforcement people since we started. And even though I know that God is powerful, I think you guys should know this, like, this been tough. And some of the stuff that they deemed me on, when I got the architect, he said, there's no way, nobody should be putting you a stop order on working for this wall that is not even a permanent, uh, wall. But anyway, that's neither here nor there, but like I said, no matter if you're ex-law enforcement like my mom or educator like me, or I raised an attorney, it doesn't matter the color of your skin, if somebody doesn't like you and just want to call, because I know who it is, but I can't prove it, but it doesn't matter who you are if you got drama going on, you guys should know that that's not right. You know, that's not feasible, that's not correct way to handle things, you should do stuff in law, um, um, in order. So I just said that to say, um, that about my restaurant, I've had a tough road, but it's gonna be successful because I believe in God and I trust in Him with everything in me, so just wanted to tell y'all that.
Thank you. Yep, alright. Okay, let's see, consent agenda items, we have seven. You might need to pull any of the consent agenda items, if not, look for motion to approve.
Don't need to pull, I just want to say, um, I'm glad we're appointing Robert Ryan to the planning commission. He asked a lot of good questions, and I appreciate his mindset and just prodding developers and all that. So with that, I will move to approve the consent.
Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Lux Car Wash, Jean Sanchez.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Lux Car Wash plat. The subject property is located west of Rock Springs Road and Wakaba Park Townhomes, south of Tangowood Drive and Northern Walsh Road, approximately four-point-five-nine acres in size. The applicant has submitted the plat to combine parcels and create three lots, as well as track a private drive, drainage, and utility easements. A car wash use is intended to be constructed on Lot Three, and a construction site plan for retail store and auto repair uses on Lot One is undergoing development review. The plat is consistent with the Lux Car Wash Construction Site Plan approved by the Development Review Committee on March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on June eleven, twenty-twenty-four. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plat. The recommended motion is to approve the plat, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter?
It's not, it's not just directly to the car wash in general, but it's all new construction. Channel nine has special night on New Suburban Beach. They put a moratorium on construction until they get the infrastructure. Y'all said we can't do it, I don't understand. Y'all are getting ready to change the zone to fifty acres off of, uh, Golden Gem Road, Ethy Road, for new, it's gonna be new houses. I have no problem with growth, we need houses, but we gotta, we gonna start digging out houses in so we can have infrastructure. We got to do something.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for the Lux Car Wash. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next one up, the Bureau. Bureau of Energy. Now, um, just question, why is this one say quasi-judicial, Susan? Yeah, on the script, I don't, is there a reason why it's?
Yeah, that's just a carryover from planning commission, when we title a planning commission, this is a quasi-judicial matter, because it's a site plan, that's all it is.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you. Alright, June, come on down.
Good evening, this is June's on Planner Two. The following item is an application for the major development plan of industrial development located at three-fifteen South pressure road. The total size of the property is about five-point-eight acre, and its future land use is industrial and zoning is light industrial. Purpose total building area is about fifty-five thousand square feet, which includes about twelve thousand square feet of office spaces and about forty-three thousand square feet of warehouse spaces. The plan is total one-hundred-three-four parking spaces, including nine accessible parkings and seven electric vehicle parking spaces. There are also seven loading spaces. Open space is about twenty percent of the property, it's, it is a stampede with a pedestrian path and benches. Development Review Committee recommends approval, and at the meeting on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, the planning commission has anonymously recommended approval of Brunash Commerce Park Major Development Plan subject to finding its, the staff report. Recommended motion is approval of, approval of Brunash Commerce Park Major Development Plan. Planning staff and applicant are here to respond to any questions.
Okay, any questions for June or the developer? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for the Brunash Commerce Park. Don't everybody jump at once.
That's, that's interesting, I just saw that, we own the property behind it, City of Apopka.
That's the, uh.
Which one is that?
Is that our lift station, that's the, that's our.
That's what that is? Okay. So what are we doing?
Looking for motion to approve the major development plan for Brunash Commerce Park.
Okay. So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Ridge Parcel Six C.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Ridge Parcel Six C Major Development Plan. The subject property is situated on the southeast corner of Binion and Boy Scout Road, approximately thirteen acres in size. The Ridge, the Ridge Parcel Six C Major Development Plan is the westernmost parcel of the Ridge PD, proposing development of six thousand square feet of food market area, a gas station, and four office warehouse buildings with twenty-five thousand square feet of area, on eleven-point-three developable acres. The office warehouse buildings are each broken down into ten thousand square feet of office use and fifteen thousand square feet of warehouse use. The proposed height is thirty-two feet, while the maximum permitted is fifty feet. The applicant also proposes an open space area of over two acres in addition to the community amenity area in Parcel Eight of the Ridge PD. Ingress and egress are on Bronson Lake Drive, Binion Road, as well as the southern boundary limit. The applicant proposes a left turn lane on Binion Road as well. The DRC recommends approval, the recommend, at its meeting on June eleventh, twenty twenty four, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the Ridge Parcel Six C Major Development Plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Ridge Parcel C Major Development Plan, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for the Ridge Parcel C.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
The second by Commissioner Anderson? Okay, second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Binion Road, Okoye Apopka Road, Golden Jim Road. Is that it, I guess that's it. Yes, Pam, Ridge.
Good evening, this is an agenda item, it's been a long time coming. We've been, um, trying to get some things done on these roads for several years. Actually, I want to start with Okoye Apopka Road. Maybe three years ago, when developments started coming in, we all acknowledged something needed to be done there. In fact, I remember Commissioner Smith looking at me and saying, I don't want to hear that it's Orange County's road, I want to hear what we're gonna do. So we have two, um, agreements in place with different developers to help us take care of that problem. I do want to mention that we worked with Orange County on many, many occasions, trying to get them to help us fix some of these roads, because it is their road and they're extremely expensive to fix. And I will tell you that staff said, no, not doing anything. And the current county commissioner stood in my office upstairs and said it wasn't a priority of hers. And at that time, I knew that we had to take this on, on our own, and that's when we started partnering with, um, developers. So the first road that I'm gonna ask you to, um, approve taking to become a city asset is Okoye Apopka Road, the southern piece just south of Keen Road to, uh, about Austin Bay Boulevard where, uh, it turns into four lanes and then from Harmon Road up to Thirteenth Street. We had originally planned on going all the way up to, uh, Hawthorne, but there are some issues between Hawthorne and Thirteenth Street. There is a stormwater issue, that's why we never took the road before. The county has committed to fixing that, but I haven't seen it yet. There are some other issues there that I think the county's better, uh, able to handle, right away issues, social justice issues that, I think our money is better spent going from Thirteenth Street to south of Keen. Along there, we're gonna, we're, you've seen, all you've seen the new signal at Martin Road. Um, the signal at Keen Road is, is under design. And I also tell y'all at this point that another reason to take these roads, I know you're gonna say this is a lot of money for us to take on, but using the Martin Road signal as an example, that was done under the permitting and, um, review of Orange County. It took two extra years and cost between four and six hundred thousand dollars more. We all use the same standards, it's just things always come up with Orange County, they keep changing their mind about what they want. Too many spoons in the pot, in my opinion, if we just had the road, who would just go out there and do it to our standards, Orange County standards and DRT standards? So that's the, the first road that I wanted y'all to be aware with. We did get a deal out of this one, yes, thank you mayor for helping with that. Um, when the county heard we were taking the road, they pulled a project, they were supposed to resurface that four lane segment and they pulled it, but we knew about that, so they have to resurface the four lane segment by the hospital, it's really bad, I, I, I know y'all know that. And the other thing is they're gonna give us, um, um, a, I wrote in here how big it is, a nice parcel.
Thirteen or seventeen acres.
Yeah, and, um, even the county is excited about a, a park coming in there. So, um, that might be a project that we'll work together with the county on.
And, and with the Ridge.
And with the Ridge.
Yes, yeah.
And, um, and, um, the hospital and we have, it could be a multi partner, it could be a really nice thing.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that's the first project, let me go back to Binion Road.
And, and I don't, do y'all want to take them all as one, or do you wanna, we?
Just take them one at a time.
You want to take, I just think maybe we, we probably should, that way, you know, if somebody got hung up on one of them or the other one. So, uh, let's see, I look for a motion to approve the Okoye Apopka Road improvements, including the, the park maybe coming our way.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Can I, just, where's the park going?
Oh, um, let me see if I can point to it.
Just north of the four fourteen overpass on Apopka Coey.
It's on the, the west side.
West side, yeah. And it, it's an old landfill that we owned at one, at one point, then the county owned it at one point, it's been closed for decades because.
But it's not, it's not a nasty landfill, it's like got.
Yeah.
Concrete and stuff like that, so we don't have to worry about anything being under there.
What a deal we're getting.
Yeah, we tried to get the bridge to buy it, but, uh.
Um, well, for what we have in mind, it's actually perfect and I will tell you, I've been tromping around on that site. I at least had the sense to put some sneakers on and I climbed over barbed wire fences and I only fell twice and, um, it's a lovely site.
She blamed the mayor, which all it was is fault.
And then to, to confirm too, the, the portion that they're gonna resurface, are we making sure that we're timing that when we're doing our upgrades as well, so that we don't have one section that's new, one section that's old?
No, they're doing it as soon as possible, I've been promised, even though it says different in the agreement that they have, I don't know how many months, they're gonna try and get it done, um, in this fiscal year, like by October. We're, we're, we're not finished designing, we're a couple of years away from doing, um, any widening construction.
Okay.
We, we just started the, um, we have some, um, things to work out on the southern piece and, um, we have the scope to do the design for the widening piece. That's one of the things that our partners at the Ridge are gonna, they're gonna do the design. But we're going forward with the, the signal at Keen now, because I think everybody would agree we need that. Um, turn lanes, we, we've kind of got this gap stop thing in there until we have all the money and the resource to do it. We're talking twenty million dollars on each segment, so, um, we're getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so first of all, I guess we need, anybody want to speak on the Apopka Coey taking, I guess? If not, uh, look for motion to approve the Okoye Apopka Road, um, transfer from Orange County to Apopka.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Binion Road.
Uh, Binion Road is, um, uh, a little different, we have a, an interchange going in there, I have interchange going in near Boy Scout. And after conversations with, um, the expressway, we decided that it was better if we owned the road because we have too many agencies trying to make decisions about something that we're gonna ultimately own. So we're gonna take the road from, um, south of Harmon, the road is actually, um, Orica Palm Drive and we're gonna go up to Hayden, um, um, Hayden Valley Drive, which is just north of Lust. And the reason we're doing that is because we have, uh, design plans for a roundabout at Harmon Road. Uh, we did a, um, we put a turn lane there just until we could get this designed. We need, we need a safety improvement there, the Vista's at Waters Edge, they've had cars run through there on numerous occasions. Um, there's getting to be enough traffic, um, we need to slow the traffic down, the, the roundabout will help with that. Um, and we need to control traffic a little better because Harmon Road's getting a lot busier. And then on the north end, in preparation for the school that will eventually come in and the build out at Avian Point, we have to do something at Lust, so we're designing a roundabout there too. And the reason I'm going a little bit beyond Harmon and Lust is so that when we come into design, we control the whole project, we don't have to, um, have that coordination with Orange County. But I will tell you again that our standards are exactly the same as Orange County's and DRT's. It's just when you have too many people trying to make the same decision, it just drags it out and costs more money. So, um, for the purposes of, uh, having a successful interchange and being able to do other roadway improvements out there, uh, I, I'm asking that you would, um, allow us to have that road transferred to the city's possession and then we control everything out there.
Any other questions on Binion? If not, look for a motion to approve the Binion Road transfer from Orange County to the City of Apopka.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Golden Jim?
Golden Jim Road, um, I've stood here about a million times talking about Golden Jim Road and we finally come to an agreement with Orange County, there's been a lot of misinformation about there, Orange County was gonna give us this or that. It, the reality is it's a thirteen million dollar fix to bring it up to city standards. And the county is comfortable with us taking the northern half, which is actually the most expensive half. Uh, and we're, that's already under design, we're probably at sixty percent. And we actually do have the funding through the Kelly Park, uh, pioneering agreement to get that piece done. There'll be a signal at, uh, Golden Gem and, and Kelly Park. I just want to add at this point, Orange County, um, has invited us to partner with them. It's called the Northwest Orange County Area Wide Transportation Network Study. And they have a neat acronym for it that, anyway, um, we are gonna be their partner, and a full partner. And it encompasses all of Apopka, it's pretty much our JPA area and then on up there where I live, by Tanderson, all the way around them. And, um, the county is not gonna be making any roadway improvements up here until that study's done. It'll take about a year to do the study and then you probably won't start seeing them do any roadway improvements from that study for two or three years. Now, I know that they have some money, um, so we're just gonna have to work with them and make sure that we get our priorities, um, in there. You've got a new school coming in up there, potentially the high school. Um, there are gonna be some issues up there and when I spoke with John Weiss about the project, I, he asked me, because we're adopting our transportation element in a couple of months, um, he asked me, were we prepared to amend it? And I said, probably we're all gonna be amending all our plans because you haven't studied up here for a while. But this is a great opportunity, but we can't, we're, we're, Kelly Park Road is, we're at sixty percent design. There are five signals going in on Kelly Park Road, you've got Golden Gem, Sadler's going in, Ethy has been extended. We're supposed to design the other piece of Sadler to get to Flumis Sorrento, all this is part of the KPI agreement. And so we're just doing the northern half and the county, like I said, they're okay. Their, their southern half is not as bad as the northern half and, um, they think that this is fair. So I'm asking you to, uh, take, um, that part of Golden Gem Road. Also let us finish the design and get it constructed to city standards.
Any questions for Pam and Golden Jim?
Oh, I should have showed you the, there, these are the limits, it's Capital Reef Way.
Do you have Golden Gem on the, on the map?
It's, you couldn't, I'm sorry, my graphic skills are really rusty, I haven't done one of these in a long time. It's the blue line.
Oh, okay.
And, and, and the southern terminus is called Capital Reef Way, it's the entrance to the, that new residential subdivision there.
The only problem that I, you know, the only problem that I see is we're only doing half of the road.
Yes ma'am, Orange County knows that and they're okay with it.
They are.
Yes.
I mean, I drive that road, for me, the entire road is in the same condition.
Most of our impacts are at the northern end and we started getting calls about Golden Gem before anything even happened in the KPI other than the interchange going in.
Right.
Which tells me that it's people coming from unincorporated Orange County and Lake County, um, running over here to get to, um, the interchange. We, we can't fix all of Orange County's roads. And like I said, this is a thirteen million dollar project and I can tell you right now, we're out of money. I mean, after we do this, I'm, I'm hoping enough money comes in to get this one done. The county hasn't done a single project in the City of Apopka since I've been here and I can't find, I can't find a roadway project in Apopka that they've done in ten years. So I, I, I don't feel bad about asking you just to accept half the road and let Orange County do the, the southern half. It's the easier half, it's the cheaper half and, um, the northern half needs to be done, that's where the impacts of our projects are.
Pam, to that, that question, I'm sorry, Commissioner, the, the, I know we're, we're trying to look at, we're looking at impact numbers that Orange County's collected.
Two years ago, I identified, that's all that I, I identified, there were others, twenty two million dollars, I have no idea what it got spent on because it didn't get spent on.
Twenty two million was, was impact fees in northwest Orange County and.
But no projects.
Okay.
I, I, there were no projects that I could find, but I could find projects and calculated the impact fees and it was twenty two million.
Like Flumis Sorrento Road or Lakeview or any of the roads that we know are, yeah, okay.
Not a signal, not a turn lane.
Any other questions for Pam before we open it up?
Okay.
Come on down.
Like to congratulate Pam on her negotiating skills, but I, I do have a query because I remember that when we were here discussing the pioneering agreement, it was said that Golden Gem Road would not be part of that pioneering agreement. I have this on video and it's a, it's, it's no doubt in my recollection, that's what was said at the time. So if that's changed, I'm happy to hear that. Having a look at where the road stops, it stops just at Capital Reef Way, which is where Parkview Preserve is. Parkview Preserve is, just a few weeks ago, had a new platting agreement for, I think, another hundred and something houses. So in Parkview Preserve, where they stop in the road, there's actually two hundred eighty six homes going in there. My property is next door and again, we are developing that property, I believe that we've got application in for fifty six homes. We had been appointed a hundred, but we're going for a higher, for a, for a lower density, a higher quality home. It just seems that we know there's more impact fees coming in from those areas. Wouldn't it make more sense just to extend the road a little bit further down into the entry of the retention ponds and Golden Gem Road? That's where, you know, it, it's, it's, it's not much longer, maybe, I don't know, quarter mile, half a mile? It just seems that if you've done such a good job to go, negotiating with Orange County just now, why don't we negotiate a little bit harder? See if there's something they can give us to take the road down just a little bit further that will benefit all of the community, not just those that are benefiting from it because of the pioneering agreement. Let's check to see when the change was made in the pioneering agreement, because Jacob Schumer was also here and said Golden Gem wasn't included.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, look for a motion to approve the Golden Gem Road transfer from Orange County, the, the, the southern, no, northern portion of Golden Gem Road from Orange County to the City of Apopka.
Before we move, to confirm that, it, it was added to the pioneering agreement?
No, it was, it was always a part of it, we always were allowed to use money that's coming into that Espro account to pay for this, that's where the money's coming from.
Okay, I, I was under the impression too that this was not included in the pioneering agreement, so.
It's the. There are a lot of components of the pioneering agreement. Um, the main focus of the pioneering agreement is to do Kelly Park Road.
Sure.
And then after that, nothing, nothing gets done until Kelly Park Road is constructed, nobody gets impact fee credits, nobody gets paid back for anything. But we as the city, we can use some of that money. I happen to budget before the pioneering agreement, the money to do the design, but the construction money is coming out of that Espro account.
Okay, good to hear, thank you. Alright, look for a motion to approve the Golden Gem Road transfer from Orange County to the City of Apopka.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, we've got the official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, you know, we're all, I guess everybody is going down to Hollywood.
Yes.
And I think Commissioner Velasquez and Commissioner Smith have both done it, been delegate, Commissioner Nesta, you have not, right?
I did it last year.
You did it last year, okay, so if y'all would, I would love to have Commissioner Anderson, if she hasn't done it before, let her do it, but it's, it's whatever y'all want to do.
Are you going to the Florida League?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It serves.
There it is.
We got it, alright, that's what we need, okay, so we'll, uh, we determined. we determined, we'll, you probably ought to do this officially since we got to have, okay. We want to make a motion to designate Commissioner Anderson as our official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference this year.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Uh, second.
Second by Commissioner, Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Just so you know, what they'll do is they'll, they, we, we want to get this in front of it, but what they'll do is they'll send us kind of a position papers that, you know, here's what we see coming up in the next legislative session. Here's where we as the League of Cities want to, to go. Doesn't mean you have to go with their, their recommendation, but they'll bring forward issues that we, we think we'll see in Tallahassee that, that we want to, we want to weigh in on with our legislative delegation. So they'll keep you informed, but we will let them know. Okay, next up, ethics complaint and findings of no probable cause by Cliff Shepherd.
All right. Good evening, council. My age is showing. That's why I've got my glasses on. This first item is a fairly standard item. In fact, I did this same item last night for the mayor of Eatonville reimbursement of legal fees. They ended up tabling it because they only had four of their five council people. But at any rate, what happens is when an ethics complaint is filed or a criminal charge is lodged against a elected official for things that they do in the course of their work, and if they are exonerated or if they're otherwise found no probable cause or found not guilty or whatever the appropriate standard is, then they can seek from you all reimbursement of legal fees. In this case, there was an ethics complaint filed against Mayor Nelson, and that was in case number 23-253. I'm going to read the summary of the agenda item, and then I'm going to read the brief section of the memo that you need in order to make the determination tonight. So in summary, and this is for people I know you all know, but other people here or online may not know. The Commission on Ethics sent a letter dated October 26, 2023 to Mayor Brian Nelson that a complaint had been filed against him by Kelly Butcher. The letter explained that the complaint would be preliminarily reviewed by the agency to determine whether the allegations were legally sufficient and whether the, any possible violations of law had been sufficiently alleged. Attached to the, to the correspondence was a copy of Ms. Butcher's complaint, which listed accusations regarding the handling of Attorney Michael Rodriguez's employment status and city's use of resources for the Next Step Foundation. The complaint also included a reference to Mayor Nelson's censure by the city council concerning Attorney Rodriguez's employment status. The Commission on Ethics met on June 7, 2024, and adopted the advocate's recommendation of no probable cause and dismissed the complaint filed against Mayor Nelson. Attorney Mark Heron of the law firm Messer Caparello represented Mayor Nelson during the proceedings. The complaint was filed against Mayor Nelson, acting in his official capacity, and the complaint was dismissed. As such, Mayor Nelson is requesting the city reimburse his legal fees in the amount of $1,527.50. A memo explaining the council's finding necessary to make this reimbursement is attached. Now, I want to point out here on the sheet before I go to the memo, that in terms of where the money comes from, I have no idea. It, maybe it's supposed to come from legal services. I don't know whether it comes from administration. That's something that I don't have any knowledge of. So but somewhere between you guys and Blanche, you'll have to figure out if you make the determination to make the reimbursement. In terms of the memo, the standard that you apply to whether to make this reimbursement is, number one, did the acts alleged in the complaint against the official arise from the performance of his or her official duties? And number two, was a public purpose being served at the time of such acts? If the council answers yes to both questions affirmatively or answers both questions affirmatively, reimbursement of the official's legal expenses is required. This is a matter of common law, meaning law that's made over the centuries by the courts. From the findings of the advocate's recommendation, which is a copy attached, it would appear to me that those findings are supported by the record, but it's the council's judgment that matters. Somebody might ask the question, so I'm going to get ahead of it, why are you being inserting your review? It is because where it's appropriate for the lawyer to serve their view is when, if you get it wrong, you might end up with a legal proceeding. That's the only reason. But ultimately, whatever judgment you make, I will defend.
Yes, questions?
Well, to confirm too, the mayor can't vote on this item because it concerns him.
Yes, he can. Let me explain that too, because I also anticipated that question. Let me pull the issue up. This is a, your question about whether there is a conflict of interest. The conflict of interest law deals with whether there is a special private gain or loss to the individual, and it means an economic benefit or harm to the, or no to the officer, his or her relative, business associate or principal. And in this case, because the reimbursement is not making them better off, it's simply putting him back where he was before the ethics complaint was determined to be no probable cause. There's no special private gain or loss. That's going to be a similar answer to the next question, which comes up, and I'll explain that at that time if necessary. But that's why he can vote. Similar to what would happen as an example, as an exception to the otherwise conflicts is you all get to vote on your salaries. If somebody proposes a raise, you don't have to disqualify yourself because it applies to your raise. So.
Well, that's, that's more, if there's more than one there at that point though, that's, specifically, that's more than one person that, when we can all vote on our raises. This is one specific person.
That's correct.
So, and it does specifically benefit him financially.
It puts him back where he was before the complaint. So, I mean, I, I'm not going to argue with how you interpret it, but that's the reason he can do it.
Interesting. Should he also be chairing this motion as well?
That's a matter of your own procedure. There's nothing in the ethics rules that would say he couldn't. And there's certainly nothing in your charter that would say he couldn't.
So in Reverend Storey Charter too, it goes into that we can decide and create our own rules procedure.
Yes.
So right now, we can choose to either follow Robert Tools of Orders, Kangaroo Court, we can do anything we want.
You absolutely could if you had enough votes to get there, yes.
Okay.
I, I think in the best interest of the public, if Vice Mayor would carry the motion.
Okay, well, any other questions? I mean, well, well.
I'll be happy to sit down and let the public do whatever you want to do. I'm just here as long as you need me.
Yeah, I think, I don't have any more questions personally to me right now. What I'd like to do is have the commission agree to use Robert Tools of Order to move forward with this, which would then put Vice Mayor as Chair of this item.
Is there a reason why we are using the Robert Tools and not using the sunshine state laws?
It's.
Well, I, I think in the best interest of the public, if the Vice Mayor would carry the motion, assume the chair at this point.
Well, let's, we got, oh, we need public comment. So anybody from the public want to speak on this one?
Albert McKinney, 3603 Golden Gem Road. In terms of what we were presented just now, it seems to me there's a difference that the attorney suggested that there was, let me just look at the, the words. No probable cause. That's not the same as no guilty. What it means is the burden of proof that had to be supplied wasn't up to that state. However, I would remind the commission that this was a, a meeting where no public was allowed and there was no comment. The only comment was from a person whose name should have been redacted tonight. Her status is such that you shouldn't have used her name. City attorney used her name twice. So be aware, that was something you shouldn't have done. In terms of the next motion, where, where we've got to, to look at things, what I would remind you is the residents were here, the residents petitioned you for that vote of censor against the mayor. It wasn't just your decision. It was based on how we felt, how he lied. So in considering what this next step after this one is, please be aware. It doesn't matter whether you decide he lied tonight or not. I have a 150-page document on the ponds at Golden Gem Road that are going to show he's a documented liar.
Leroy Bell, Mark Hallen. I, I can't wrap, wrap my mind around that this man, he get to come up in here and lie. The complaint, it didn't exonerate him. It didn't exonerate him. That means he lied still. They just didn't, they just didn't have enough to say guilty or not guilty. That's what the complaint said out of Tallahassee. Now, what that bring us to? That bring us to that we know that this commission was only three people said when this was made. Commissioner Nestor, the mayor himself, Commissioner Diane, and at the time, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Smith conveniently wasn't here for that vote, but tonight he here. And I think he might be here to serve his call along with the new elect. But as a minister, it says in the Ten Commandments, death shall not lie. This man clearly told a lie. If you remember, you have an ethic violation against you when the man came out from Advent and redid New Hope. If I remember correctly, you came to the city because you was a city councilman. And when they put the ethic violation on you, you asked for a lawyer. It ain't that far back. I know you can remember. And they told you no. You got to get your own. The man sitting to your left is no better than you. He had to get representation for the lie that he told. Must have been a pretty good lawyer because the lawyer got up there and got murdered and bored. So don't you believe the lawyer should be paid? Was he doing it for you? Was he doing it for you or you? He was doing it for himself. So what I think should happen is, is a wash. He need to pay his bills. And we need to stick to the same vote that was voted on the first go around. If not, then this man get to do anything he wanted. He already, you already gave him, to give him the power to change the minutes. He can go in and document, what, what we're looking at now, we're looking at, we just seen this, what, a couple of weeks ago when Trump was in, at, at, at court? And everybody showed up with their redneck ties on. This is what he trying to do right here. Come on, stand up. Stand up. Stand up for the peoples in Apopka one time. One time, and, and, and the smirk on your face really don't mean a thing to me. Because you showing your true colors. I know this man bankrolled half of your, your campaign and stuff, but the people voted for you. People still got hope for you. Stand up.
Anybody else? All right. Close of public hearing. Yeah, sure.
Just to get the record clear, because I don't want any confusion on this matter. The first one has to do with the allegation that Ms. Butcher's name should not be used. The statute they're talking about, you might have heard in the vernacular, it's called Marcy's Law. It's chapter 11907, 12J1. You will be listening carefully and you'll note that you will not hear the word name anywhere in the statute. Any information not otherwise held confidential or exempt from 11907, which is the public record statute, which reveals the home or employment telephone number, home or employment address or personal assets of a person who has been the victim of, and then I will, for the benefit of Ms. Butcher, not read all the things that make it, make you qualify for that, but, but she has claimed to be in one of those categories. If, if upon her request and verification, critically verification that a crime has been, that has occurred, then the information is not public record. So things like address and so forth. A claim was made today that she fell into one of the protected categories. As yet, no verification of that claim has been made. And the only thing that's been mentioned by me is her name, which is not exempt regardless. So that's the first. The second thing is, there was a reference just made to the mayor paying his own bills and you know, but the public wouldn't know unless they've seen the packet, that there is evidence that the bills were paid by the mayor prior to tonight. So that's not the issue. The attorney has already been paid. And again, just so we're on the same page, the issue to be determined by you is really two things. Did the alleged acts of the complaint against the official arise from the performance of his or her official duties? That's step one. Step two, was a public purpose being served? That is the limitation on whether you do or don't reimburse the fees. You have to find both things to be present or not. And if you find they're present, reimbursement is automatic. If you find they're not, it's not, but you might be in proceeding.
Can you repeat those two questions again?
Sure. They're, they're, they're in the memo, but they are. Did the acts alleged in the complaint, which you have a copy of that in your packet, alleged against the official arise from the performance of his or her official duties? And two, was a public purpose being served at the time of such acts? The acts that were complained of were of the first, first, what was it called? Next Step Foundation and having a meeting here. I guess to, something about homelessness. I don't know much about that. And was he acting in his official duties as mayor? The second is, was a public purpose being served? Again, those are the two things that you're to consider.
Attorney Shepherd, one last question for you, and sorry I didn't think about this before. In your memo that you provided, you did provide an opinion in there at the bottom.
Right.
But in your email to Commissioner Velasquez earlier today or yesterday, you said it would be inappropriate for me to give what amount to a personal rather than legal opinion with that same question, basically.
That, that different question was, was regarding censure. The censure has nothing, there's no legal ramifications in terms of the city getting sued. So that's the difference. Here, if you were to decide not to reimburse, there is the potential for the city to face a lawsuit which will be brought by the mayor to get his fees paid back, which in this case, a court would decide the same questions you decided and determine whether you got them right by reviewing the evidence. If the court disagrees with you and orders them paid, then you would pay those fees and more fees. So that's the reason why this issue has the ability for me to tell you that, I think if you read the report sort of as unbiased as you can, there's enough in there to support these two things. But at the end of the day, as I said, if you make a different determination, I or someone will defend it as best it can be defended.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah, I thought I'd get, yeah, go ahead.
I don't know all the legality talk, but if I'm not mistaken, the first part of that was that the, they had to prove that the mayor was charged as the liar. Is that correct, attorney?
No.
I'm sorry. I'm asking. The, the, the censure was mentioned in the complaint. But ultimate, and there, there's some discussion of that in the advocate's recommendation. But the complaints that allege something that they could at least investigate for probable cause have nothing to do with that. It has to do with the use of this facility and whether it was appropriate. I was interviewed only about that in terms of who interviewed me, one of whoever the investigator was. And then the question is, did what he did in that, let me go back to the memo. Was a public, public purpose served? Well, it's an agency, as I understand it, that deals with homelessness and was looking for a place to do that within the city of Apopka, I think. Again, I wasn't there. So those, those are the, that, that is the part of the complaint that the court, the agency went into in detail and could cite to a specific statute, which was, was the mayor misusing his public office? I think that was it.
All right, because my, my understanding is that he was censored.
This, that's a different one.
Okay, the first part.
Censure's next. That's the next item. This is not that item.
Right, for the censorship, right?
No, the, the censure is the next item up. And, and no, this, she mentioned the censure in the complaint, Ms. Butcher did. But when they ultimately did the advocate's report, they only focused on whether it was a misuse of his office and that related to the
Next to the homeless.
Yes, correct.
Then I'm out of line.
So to confirm, attorney, this is, the ethics complaint is completely separate and no way dictates the censure.
Correct.
That occurred. Okay.
It, it was mentioned in the, she threw that in there as a part of her allegations.
Sure.
But that was not.
One doesn't influence the other.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, so hold on, going back to how we're going to run this moving forward. Commissioner Anderson, you said, why don't we use the sunshine rules? Why do you want to do that?
Well, I asked, the question was posed to you, why would you want to use the Robert's rule?
It's proper. It's what we most do anyways. It's what most municipalities use in any capacity. Orange County uses it.
But in this particular incident, why are you?
I've always wanted to use it.
But you've never stated that before?
Oh, yeah.
Recently, since I've been on the council?
No. No, I've said that we should always be in a proper, should always be following the rules. As have Commissioner Smith's, or, uh, yeah. Friends have, have told us that we should be doing that. Some other followers have emailed all of us to say that we should be following Robert's rules of order. So I'm doing what the residents want us to do. It's what we've been asked to do is use Robert's rules of order. I don't know if you, you know, it just came out, we've had a couple of emails recently to all of us to say, update yourself on Robert's rules of order. Let's use Robert's rules of order. That's what we should be doing.
But we haven't agreed to, we haven't agreed as a council.
No, that's my ask because that's what the residents are asking us to do and that's who elected us.
But we haven't all agreed to yet. Is that accurate statement?
That's correct. That's what I'm asking you, that we do what the residents elected us to do. So I would like to use Robert, I would move that we use Robert's rules of order moving forward on this item and the next item.
So let's do a roll call. How's that?
So I vote for it.
We, we're doing a roll call to do what?
If we're going to use that or not.
Which?
I, I, I ask if the vice mayor would carry the motion. I, I, I don't know why we need to take a vote.
But that's not the same as Robert's rules of order. There's, there's a specific order and, and proper procedure that we've been put all in our mailboxes. That.
So she would be the person that would carry the motion?
Only if we're following Robert's rules of order. So are you agreeing to Robert's rules of order then?
That's what I asked her to do. I, I just, I don't know why we still arguing about it. Let her carry the motion.
That's not the same thing, but that's okay. So i- if Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor Velazquez is moving forward with this, going to be running this. Perfect. Are we all in agreement with that then? Commissioner Anderson?
What exactly is I'm, I'm agreeing to?
That Vice Mayor Velazquez is going to be moving forward with, uh, chairing this.
The motion, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, Vice Mayor, I have some points I would like to make before we actually take the vote.
Okay.
In reference to attorneys being paid that none of us have agreed to or approved in any capacity. We had one that was, I have an invoice here from June 14th, 2023. Attention to Mayor Brian Nelson, client named City of Apopka. This was in reference to a $2,380 opinion letter by William N. Spicola in reference to our charter, uh, in reviewing that and giving an opinion. None of us reviewed this. None of us agreed to it. Uh, but it was paid and approved and a client and customer was City of Apopka and attention Mayor Brian Nelson. In his official capacity, that's what he did.
Commissioner Nestor. Now you're out of order. That's not the item business that she's about to conduct. This is, this motion is to whether or not we're going to reimburse the mayor.
I'm doing it right now.
Attorney fees for the hearing.
I'm doing.
Yeah, but he's, before we vote on that, what he wants to do is kind of.
I think that's the next motion, but.
No, it's not the next motion. Let me finish my, uh, comment and then you can point of order it if you feel it's appropriate. But again, we're not suing Robert's rules of order either, so, um, that wouldn't apply here. On the payments that were made for this attorney, uh, Messer Caparella, P A. It totals $1,040. Is that correct? $1,040, it is. And the billing info goes to Brian Nelson at his personal address, 1157 Oak Point Circle in Apopka, to an email, hobo gator at AOL dot com. This shows that he wasn't acting in his official capacity. He was acting as a private citizen being litigated over lies and ethics complaints. One, he was clearly, he felt that he was acting in his official capacity. The other one, he knew he was not acting in his official capacity. And that's why this answers, or helps to answer the two questions that he was not serving public purpose, he was serving himself, which is why this goes to hobo gator at AOL dot com. It references himself, not the mayor, not the city of Apopka, and it references his private address. And that's why he knew that he was not doing the work of the people. And this wasn't for a public purpose. It was a private purpose that he was serving. And I will give back my time.
I have a question for the attorney. So is it the, the ethics complaint was filed while he was actually, it was in the capacity of his role as a mayor? Is that accurate?
Because that's what makes him subject to, in, all of you are subject to 112 because you're elected officials. He happens to be the mayor, but it's because you're elected officials.
Questions are in regards to him serving as the mayor at that time when the complaint was filed. Is that accurate?
Otherwise, 112 wouldn't apply.
So the two documents that he's referencing is after the, the, the fact where the complaint was actually made, is that?
Respectfully, where the bill was mailed is probably not relevant to the consideration.
Okay, thank you.
It's how the bill was mailed. That's what's important. It wasn't referencing City of Apopka. It wasn't referencing Mayor Brian Nelson. It was referencing hobo gator AOL dot com. It was referencing resident Brian Nelson.
He wasn't, he wasn't on his own fishing and then a complaint was filed. He was acting in the capacity as the mayor with the allegations. So from my understanding, based off of the two questions I've asked, was he acting in the capacity, he was serving in the capacity as the mayor with the, when the complaint was filed?
Just because you're elected doesn't mean you're acting in the, the way of your job. Just because we all work different jobs, have different things, that doesn't mean that I'm working in the capacity of a commissioner when I'm doing that.
We're going to vote on it tonight. Is that accurate? They were going to vote on if he were acting in the capacity as the mayor at that time.
Correct.
So the two bills that were filed, was that before the, the, I'm not getting, I'm not understanding the, the, when the action happened. The two bills, and that was during, if I recall, during the discussion with the terminating the, the services of the attorney.
Correct.
That we have voted to terminate the attorney.
Correct.
And then the mayor went out for opinions.
Without any approval, without anybody asking and paid the bill out of city funds.
Does he usually have to request court approval prior to?
No, correct. So why isn't he doing it now? That's my point, because he knew that he was not acting.
Because the law allows him to do that. That's why he's doing it now. That's the law.
And, and our, our attorney here who gets paid by the hour also.
Right, they were three opinions. They were three opinions.
Well, Mayor, I know you probably have a script here too, because you, you don't come off the brain with this. So go ahead and read your script so that we can get through that too.
Looking for a motion on this one and we'll talk about on the next one.
So we're looking for a motion on the. Let me just read this out here.
And before a motion, just keep in mind too, that nobody, we can let this die on the floor if it's motioned. It doesn't have to be seconded. So you don't have to be the good guy or bad guy. You can just let it be in silence and let it move on.
The citation, yeah. You know, I didn't get. Yeah, she didn't, I didn't get that. We already did the public comments.
Yes.
Asked for a motion to approve the reimbursement of legal fees in the amount of $1,527.50 to Mayor Brian Nelson. Looking for a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Anybody?
You got a motion and a second.
You got a, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor? All against?
No.
I also say no. Okay, the next, the next item is the rescinding, rescinding the center of Mayor Nelson presented by Cliff Shepherd.
Uh, yes, this is at the request of Mayor Nelson and the request is to consider whether to rescind his censure by city council. Uh, again, I'll read the summary. The Commission on Ethics sent a letter dated October 26th, 2023 to Mayor Brian Nelson that a complaint was filed by Kelly Butcher against, regarding the mayor. Attached to the correspondence was a copy of Ms. Butcher's complaint and also mentioned and included a copy of Mayor Nelson's censure by city council over statements he made about Attorney Rodriguez's employment status. The Commission of Ethics met on June 7th, 2024 and adopted the advocate's recommendation of no probable cause and dismissed the complaint filed against Mayor Nelson. Mayor Nelson is requesting that resolution 2023 dash 20 concerning his censure be rescinded concerning the Commission on Ethics decision. There's no funding necessary and this is the council pleasure, uh, for discussion. Um, I will jump ahead also on the issue of Robert's rules because I figure that's going to come up. This was a motion, has been teed up as a motion to rescind, so I went and did my homework. And since I don't know whether you are officially following it or not, but in case you are, um, the motion to rescind follows the same procedure as a motion to amend something previously adopted. Any member can move this motion. A member makes a motion. If there's a second, the group debates the amendment, takes a vote, it passes, the motion is amended. And so the same thing that would apply to amend a previously adopted motion applies to a motion to rescind and anybody can make the motion.
Well, before you leave, I have a question. You can't rescind something that's already been done though, something that can't be undone. And similar to, it's been referenced ringing a bell, uh, yelling, saying, saying a lie. You can't rescind that. That doesn't go away.
Well, 100%, you cannot, um, undo what has been done. But in the context of what that rule applies to, is let's suppose the council had voted, uh, and, and passed a contract where the contract is already started to work. You can't undo that because of the legal consequences of reaching contract. If you do, then you're, you're facing legal consequences. Where here, what was done is essentially, and I'm giving you the law. I'm not advocating a position. I'm just making you understand it as best I can. This is not something that can't be undone in the sense that you can, you have a set of minutes. And if you decide that the minutes were wrong, at the next meeting, you can change them. If they were written, they can be changed. So it's in that category. But anything that would have a financial consequence, uh, a penalty consequence of something to someone, like they lose a job or whatever, where they've already lost a job, things like that, that can't be undone. That's what that means, not things that are essentially, in this case of a resolution that you can change if you choose to. Not whether you should or not, but you, it doesn't fall into the category of can't be undone. You could argue that the belt can't be unwrong. That's a different argument, but it's not that can't be undone.
I think that's the same argument, but.
Thank you.
Okay, ask. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item?
And, and before that, uh, I, I want to, uh, remove myself. I was not present when the vote was taken, so therefore I will not vote on the rescind.
I'm sorry, do we take questions from up here first?
Sure, whatever you want. You open the public period.
Okay, um, let's take some questions from up here first and then we'll open it up to the public.
I guess the first one I have, just with Commissioner Smith said, even though he wasn't here, that wouldn't preclude him from voting, nor was Commissioner Anderson in on the city council at the time that the censorship vote was taken.
It would not preclude them from voting. It would not preclude them.
But Commissioner Smith, you are saying that you will not vote on this.
Correct. I wasn't, I was not present when the vote was taken.
Right, you were not present. So, um, you're saying that you're going to abstain from this vote?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is Commissioner Anderson doing the same thing?
So for the record, I'm just want to indicate that Commissioner Smith will not be voting on this. And I will make the, send, present that to, and, uh, Commissioner Anderson, will you be voting or abstaining from it?
So I would like to, um, probably table this because I need to do more research on what I need to, um, decide. So I didn't know that I was aware, that I wasn't aware of what I was allowed to do. So I'm just asking maybe this business item number seven, uh, be tabled so that.
That's a motion also. If you want to make a motion to table, then you table it and it will, if it, if it passes, then we come back, bring it back at a future date.
We can do a public comment first and then we'll, we can entertain a motion from there.
Okay, I want to open this up to the public.
Any more questions from me?
Uh, well, I had sent you, you know, several, I think I've sent you two, two emails and you've answered them all. Um, um, and I guess for the record, what I had asked was, it appears the findings of the complaint was filed on April 16th. When was the report received by the city of Apopka? And you responded that you didn't know. When the report was received by the city, I received the initial information on the outcome from Ms. Van Camp on June 13th. I received the additional information from, uh, the Florida Commission of Ethics on June 14th. And that was only after I asked, and I remember it was a previous email where I asked for the transcript of the interview. Um, so I did get that late yesterday. And I did review that and, and I did make some notes. Um, is there a statute of limitation where a prior vote can be rescinded? I researched Robert rules. I could not find verbiage regarding a timeframe for rescinding a vote. Is there a state statute that addresses, uh, a statute of limitation and you responded?
No.
No. Um, and FYI, Robert rules of order are not mandatory for local government meetings in Florida. Florida adheres to the sunshine law, chapter 286 Florida statutes, which dict, dictates open meeting procedures. There is a practical restriction. However, in that if irreversible action has already been taken pursuant to the motion, that motion cannot be rescinded.
Exactly. And, and again, try to re, re emphasize what irreversible means. If we had given a, let a contract by a vote to demolish a building and the building had been demolished, reversing the motion wouldn't change the demolishing of the building. That's what that's meant to go to. That's irreversible. Words are not irreversible. They may pay hurt, but they're not irreversible.
Okay. Um, the next question that I did, I mean, because I did send several questions. I did read through the report, page eight, paragraph two. Interesting because it does indicate by the Ethics Commission, while the April 5th vote to terminate may not have been able to effectuate the termination of Rodriguez's employment, his May 4th resignation should have. Even after providing his letter of resignation, the respondent continued to withhold the truth of the nature of Rodriguez's employment from the city council during meetings and therefore withheld this information from the public. This action is puzzling. And that was written on the report by the Ethics. Um, can you please, and then I, that, following that, that statement, I asked, can you please share your professional opinion? The Ethics Commission agrees in their investigation, the respondent, and I put in parentheses, the mayor, did continue to hold the truth of the nature of Rodriguez's employment from the city council and therefore withheld the information from the public, stating the action is puzzling. And then you responded, because both the decision to reimburse and the decision to rescind the censure was exclusive to the council and neither decision is illegal, it would be inappropriate for me to give what would amount to a personal rather than a legal opinion.
Right. And so the difference here is with the censure, one way or the other, I, it doesn't, there's no legal recourse. There's not, there's, the city's not going to be sued. The viable lawsuit either way. The, the reimbursement issue is a different matter.
The last one, as I, as I said, reading the final investigation and findings, and this is what I wrote. Reading the final investigation and findings by the Commission on Ethics, I cannot find the word exonerated. reading the final investigation and findings by the Commission on Ethics, I cannot find the word exonerated. I believe the investigation by the commission was conducted solely on the complaint by the community resident. This investigation does not include the resolution for the censure voted on August second, twenty-twenty-three by the council. So why would there be a request to rescind a vote conducted by the council when the council did not initiate the ethics complaint? The censure is a separate action, not related to the ethics complaint. And you said, no question here, so.
Aside from me, that, because I, I, I'm not the one who's requesting it.
Um, so basically that's how I feel is like the, the ethics complaint was brought independently by a community resident. So I just feel that tying in that ethics with the censor, uh, resolution, one has nothing to do with the other because as a council, we felt that at that time and even the findings by the Ethics Committee, there is some, they also indicate that he did withheld information for the public. And that was the reason why the censor was initiated and voted on. It had nothing to do, we never sent this up to the Ethics Commission, it was within us here at the council. So I just wanted to make that for the public record that, you know, there were some concerns and there were some questions I needed answered and our attorney did answer them. So at this point, it's, it's really a vote and a decision that we make here on the dais and also, uh, on, from the public. So.
Any further questions from me?
Further questions here from the, from the dais. All right, so now we open it up.
I do, I'm sorry, I, I haven't, just trying to understand. So although this commission did not initially formulate the complaint, the allegations of the mayor not being truthful was addressed in the complaint?
It was not.
Was it?
Well, she, what, what the vice mayor read is in the report, there's no question about it, and that was the conclusion of the investigator. I think the word was puzzling or some, I forget exactly what it was word, but what she said is exactly what's there. But if you look at the ethics code, uh, and this is applicable to all of you, there is no ethics rule about elected officials must tell the truth or mustn't tell the truth or somewhere in between. This is a lesson I would think as a country we've learned from listening to politicians nationally, locally, statewide. That, that, there isn't such a rule. Now, there is a rule if it applies to like financial forums, things of that nature. But, but generally speaking, and that's, that's the thing, it was raised by the complainant, it was thrown into the mix, but it wasn't something that they could say, here's a statute that says you, you did something wrong by misrepresenting this thing or saying this was, uh, this was something other than true, there isn't such a rule. And so ultimately it was in the complaint package, but i- if that was the only thing that was in there, there wouldn't have even been an investigation.
So you're saying one doesn't relate to the other in any capacity?
Not in terms of these two items reimbursement, which was for something that was investigatable and investigated versus this, correct.
Correct, so these are irrelevant, let's do public comment.
Oh, so let me see, it's open for public comment? Our speaker, just provide your name.
Thanks, William. The vote on the censorship was made within the house here like, uh, oh yeah, good, what Commissioner Falcone says. Um, the thing is, he was caught. This, I mean, it's new, back it out of it, it is what it is. If you paint it, that's the color it's going to be. The fifty million dollars, I don't, uh, that's up to y'all. But as far as the censorship, the guy has done so many things as I've asked him a question about the mu, the one point seven million dollars from the state for the, uh, for the water treatment plant out on Northwest. Oh, I know nothing about it. Got a picture of him shaking hands with the sen, the United States Senator getting a check. He knew about it. The, there's nothing truthful, he, he's not transparent at all. He can't, he, he's not going to be honest with us, never will. He's out for himself. And I, and if he gets voted, y'all drop the censorship tonight, I've go, I've lost all hope in the city of Apopka. This guy cannot lead us. We got a man sitting behind me here against the back wall, white shirt on. And then the man here in the middle says, oh, he, I agree, he can't do the thing, but he's still running the department that they have eighty-five, they, more than eighty-five percent of the personnel in that department still don't trust him. They still sitting there. How many people this week got raises, forty thousand dollar a year raise? Half of the working class of people in Apopka don't make that all year long. And he got a raise of that much? I mean, come on people. How much can you milk this dairy farm? Taxpayers are drying up. You're killing us. This mayor is guilty of, and he said, needs to be censored. He's not going to change till he's voted out of office.
Your bill, uh, the city attorney just mentioned that the analogy that he used about if this had have been the minutes, you could go back and you can change it. I beg to differ with him simply because, uh, the fact that it wasn't just simply minutes. What it was, it was a council vote, three to two. That was, that went into the minutes. But it was a legal vote by constitutional, up under this legislature that it was voted up under the Robert rules of law, uh, up under the sunshine. But let me, let me go with this. You know ants, you got red ants and you got black ants. They take care of the infrastructure real good, they get along just like the citizens of Apopka. You say you love Apopka. You can put those ant, the red and the black ant together in a jar. They'll go about their business, they can get along with each other. I'm talking about they can share, because they love the infrastructure where they live. But all you is take and shake that jar. And you know what happened? Chaos, they'll kill each other, they'll fight each other to the death. Who do you blame? Do you blame the red ant? Or do you blame the black ant? No, I tell you who you blame. You blame the ass that shook the jar. And right now, this ass is shaking the jar. You guys are standing here letting him bring this city down with lies and deception. We have, you have voted and I commend you for recusing. But then on the other hand, why would I do that? You should have recused on the last vote too. It seems to be that instead of trying to hold up the right of the citizen that give you your little token pay that you would, uh, on their side. But it seems to be for some reason, you still want to reward the ass that shake the jar.
You already spoke, did, did you speak yet?
No. Albert McCamay three six oh three Golden Gem Road. This could be really complicated or it can be really simple. I'll make it simple for you. Did Brian Nelson's actions when he admitted to tell you that Michael Rodriguez was still employed here harm the residents of Apopka? Well, if Michael Rodriguez continued to pull salary while Brian Nelson was keeping quiet, then we, the residents are paying for his lies. If you're here to represent us, you cannot possibly allow him to lie and a city attorney to be paid for how many months, how much money did it cost? Did Brian, did you ever ask, sorry, I'm addressing you, but, but it's fine. Did anyone ever ask Michael Rodriguez to return the money that he was illegally paid from the city? So we can look at another thing, as a five oh one C three, uh, entity, we recently requested to rent city hall. Susan Bourne replied and she said, city hall is not for rent. Brian Nelson, as a representative of the Next Step Foundation, managed to use this city hall and he was on the board. How is it he, not in his capacity as mayor, but represented five oh one C three Next Step Foundation, abused the rights of the city and paid? In fact, there probably was even police officers there that day. I would actually like to see how much the Next Step Foundation using city hall cost us. And it makes no difference today if Brian Nelson didn't commit a criminal offense because the next set of documentation that I'm going to present to you, if you've got the courage to look at them, will show that he lied, he puts city lives at risk.
Good evening, I drove all the way from Tampa in the rain and traffic just to try to get here before the meeting was over and thank God I have. Sylvester Hall, thirty-nine-one, thirty-nine-one Rolling Hills Lane. So when, when I, when I say too many good people standing by and watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it, see how it rings truth? I'm not going to talk to you like you're, you're, you're kids because you all know the truth. In the words of, uh, ex commissioner Kyle Becker, Mr. Cliff, you work for the people, you're not the mayor's lawyer, you, you, you're for the people. And the words know your place. Thank you, smile, know your place because you know what you're doing. And when you can sit up here and say principles don't matter, integrity don't matter, honesty don't matter, accountability don't matter, responsibility don't matter, laws don't matter, ethics don't matter, character don't matter, procedures don't matter, leadership don't matter and laws don't matter. We got the wrong city commissioner sitting over there, city, uh, uh, attorney sitting over there. Now, here's one thing that rings truth. When I say we normalize the abnormal, when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth, desensitize the truth where the truth don't even matter. Our city attorneys were right here when the mayor told that lie. We all know the mayor lied. That's, that's, that's the, that's the thing about getting up and coming out and being involved. You don't have to listen to what was said and what was read in the newspaper and who twisted and who turned it. He was sitting right here when he told the bold faced lie. And Commissioner Anderson, if you want to look at it, you can go back and re, revisit the tapes. But I'm going to pass a word of wisdom to you like I did before the election. You had a chance to excuse yourself, I would have took that opportunity to do that, just for wisdom. You spoke on, you was the expert for police brutality, you shouldn't have done that. And our city attorney didn't, our city attorney didn't tell you. He advised everybody else and give them legal matters, but he didn't give you any legal matter on that. Same thing with you, Commissioner Smith. It's time for us to start doing the will of the people. And if the mayor can sit up here and tell a lie after lying, a lie after lie, and it don't matter, and it don't matter to our city attorney, we have a problem. How can people trust you to lead them? And every word come out of your mouth, they got to go out and vet. And that's the problem we have and to stop the growth in the city of Apopka because everything the mayor brings forward, you got to double check it with a fine tooth to make sure it's legit and he's doing the will of the people for the people. We must stand up for our citizens. And right now, I don't have enough, when you say enough is enough, I'm tired of people worrying on the, the people that work so hard and pay their taxes for you guys to lead them and do the right thing by them. I pray to each one of you. I heard the speech about the young lady losing her father for, as firefighter. And the only reason that firefighters don't have a contract is because the mayor don't want them to have a contract. That's saying, you guys got to do something about that.
Thank you, Sylvester. Anyone else for public opinion? Public comment, I should say. Mr. Rod Olson?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane. I'm just going to read one part of the resolution, section one, the foregoing quote, whereas unquote clauses are incorporated herein and the city council of Apopka formally censured Mayor Brian Nelson for misleading the city council and by the same actions, the people of Apopka through untruthful public comments regarding the employment status of former, the former city attorney. That's the simple statement. You need to only look at the minutes if you want to go to, uh, whatever it is YouTube and review the meeting. If you haven't done so, do it, you'll see the two meetings where the mayor misrepresented the facts. Thank you.
Is that it, anyone else for public comment? Bring it back up to the board for a, a motion.
I'd like to.
Oh, okay.
A couple of things, well, let me, let me start out with, uh, Mr. Blasquez, uh, I know that, you know that I didn't see eye to eye with Mayor Kilsheimer, but when his, his, uh, ethics complaint came forward that he was exonerated on, um, I brought it forward, didn't ask any questions, we paid the bill. I know that Commissioner Smith, the same thing you voted for to pay his bills. So what you're saying is that I'm different because we don't see eye to eye on things.
Point of order, this is not the same topic, you could have said that the last one, this is a different topic now.
So anyway, that's the.
I, I, but, no, I'm sorry, please, um, what I will say is, did the acts alleged in the complaint against the official arise from the, from, from the performance of his or her official duties? Um, the complaint did rise from that. Was the public purpose being served at the time of such acts? No, even the commission says in page eight, paragraph two, it actually says that however the action lies in within, whether the respondent had a lawful intent or did he maintain his belief that he had al, ultimately authority regarding the employment of the city attorney? They couldn't even answer that, they put it in a question mark, but they felt that during, you did withheld disinformation from the public and they actually wrote, this action is puzzling. So in answering the two questions that attorney asked us to answer, it is the, I answered those questions according to what I found did occur in your actions with the censor and also it did occur, that is the reason why the, uh, community resident filed the complaint.
Hmm, okay, well, let me just read this, this statement, I just want to get this off my chest. I've asked Cliff Shepard, our attorney, to add the censorship clarification item to the agenda on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I am asking for my censorship vote from August second, two thousand twenty-three to be removed from the records. The basis of the censorship vote was on the, over the departure of our former city attorney, Michael Rodriguez. I'm bringing this item, item up because on October thirteenth, the Florida Commission on Ethics the Florida Commission on Ethics received complaint twenty three dash two fifty three and began an investigation on me, including the same issue the censorship was based on. The Ethics Commission investigated all allegations and then complaint. And on June seventh, they adopted the recommendation of, in quotes, no probable cause to believe Mr. Nelson violated the constitutional amendment prohibiting abuse of office for a disproportionate benefit and misused his position regarding the termination of the city, city attorney, end of quotes. And they have dismissed the complaint filed against me. Now I'd like to share with everyone the role and composition of the Florida Commission on Ethics. In quotes, the commission is a nine-member commission with a staff of approximately twenty five employees located in Tallahassee, Florida, that serves as the guardian of the standard of conduct for officers and employees of Florida and its political subdivisions and functions as an independent commission responsible for investigating and issuing public reports on complaints of breach of the public trust by public officers and employees, end of quote. Five members are appointed by the governor with no more than three from the same political party, with one of the five members a former, former city or county official. Two are appointed by the Speaker of the House, two by the Senate President, and must be equally split by party affiliation. This is important because the Commission on Ethics looks at the facts and makes objective decisions not based on politics. During the investigation, the Commission on Ethics sent one of their investigators down from Tallahassee to interview myself, as well as former city attorney Michael Rodriguez, our H R director, our city clerk, our local pastor, and others before the commission came to their final determination of no probable cause for the charges. The censorship vote against me was brought forward because I did not fire city attorney Michael Rodriguez after the council's vote to fire him. The city charter does not give the city council the authority to fire the city attorney, nor any other city employee. This role is relegated to the mayor under our strong mayor form of government. This portion of the charter was reviewed by Mi- Michael Rodriguez, our current city attorney Cliff Shepard, and two other third-party attorneys, and all agreed that the city council did not have the authority to fire Michael Rodriguez. But the charter does require that the city council must approve new directors, such as the recently hired city administrator Jacob Smith and Michelle Boylan, our new economic development director. Both were appointed unanimously, as was Michael Rodriguez, Rodriguez several years ago. The censorship vote was brought forward by a former city commissioner for political reasons, had nothing to do with good public policy. Prior to the censorship vote, this prior city commissioner asked a city employee to meet him at a restaurant near his place of business. During the meeting, the city employee was told that if I would not run for another term as mayor, the commissioner would drop the censorship vote. The city employee has agreed to swear under oath or take a lie detector test to prove that this meeting actually happened. I waited until the former Florida Commission on Ethics ruling of this no probable cause of an ethics violation before releasing this basis for this censorship vote last year that was based on politics and not policy. For these reasons, I've asked the Apopka City Council to rescind the censorship vote dated August second, two thousand twenty three. Mayor Brian Nelson.
Okay, so I don't know who writes that mess for you. It's so funny. Madam Vice Mayor, can you please reread, and you already read it once, uh in that email that you sent to our attorney in reference to the action is puzzling? Can you reread that quote that you got from uh the Ethics Commission?
Well, I just wanted to stand, I wanted to just make something clear. The re- the resolution of twenty twenty three dash twenty, which was to censor Mayor Brian Nelson, was not because you did not terminate the uh attorney. It has here, it was because you were not truthful about his employment status. It was not because you didn't terminate him. And the resolution is broken down as such. And I'll start with the third paragraph. Whereas on Wednesday, June twenty first, twenty twenty three, in a public hearing within the City of Apopka Council chambers, Mayor Nelson made a public comment that demonstrated his prior public comments about the employment status of the now former city attorney were untrue. And whereas on Wednesday, May third, the former city attorney did voluntarily resign during the public hearing within the City of Apopka Council chambers, as recorded and approved in the minutes. Fourth, the, the next one, whereas the mayor Nelson on Wednesday, June seventh, did on record inform city council, the former city attorney was no longer employed as of that day, and that was June seventh, twenty twenty three. That's recorded and approved in the minutes. Whereas on, please let me finish. Thank you. Whereas on Wednesday, June twenty first, twenty twenty three, when asked by the city council about the employment status of the former city attorney, Mayor Nelson indicated he was still employed as of that date, June twenty first, twenty twenty three, receiving pay as recorded and approved in minutes. So it, it was not that he was terminated. It, the resolution and the censorship was about being untruthful to the status of his employment. And each time at public council meetings, when uh I guess uh you were asked about his employment, you continued to say he was not employed. He was employed. And I remember one uh council meeting where you said as of one thirty that day, and I remember it was an afternoon one. So this, this censorship had nothing to do with that we, that we didn't agree that he was terminated when we voted for his termination. It was about the information about his employment. And in this findings with the State of Florida Commission of Ethics on page number eight, it even says, while the April fifth vote to terminate may not have been able to effectuate the termination of Rodriguez's employment, his May fourth resignation should have. On May third, Rodriguez informed the city council, including the respondent, of his intention to resign and provided the written resignation on May fourth. Even after providing his letter of resignation, respondent continued to withhold the truth of nature, of the nature of Rodriguez's employment from the city council during meetings, and therefore withheld disinformation from the public. This action is puzzling. So it's not saying, that they're not saying that you um, that what they're actually, they're even puzzled by the fact that that you were not, you were not truthful. There was nothing to say. It didn't take anything for you to tell us, look, he's still employed, I still need him. Uh, I, I still need him to resolve, to, to help me with some, you know, ongoing projects, and um, we'll decide on the date when he's going to be um, uh, you know, when he's going to be terminated, when we, I'm gonna let him resign. But you didn't say that to any of us.
Did you have anything to do with the censorship proclamation?
I, yeah, we voted on it.
Did you have anything to do with that, writing that proclamation?
No, I did not.
Okay. Did you have anything to do with that, Mr. Nesta? Okay. So who would that lead us then? If there were three people that voted for it?
But then in each of the, each of these meetings, there was a discussion.
So, so who, who then put together the censorship?
It, it doesn't matter.
No, it does matter.
The vice mayor before me.
Okay, correct. And so, when I just said, the censorship vote was brought forward by a former city commissioner for political reasons and had nothing to do with public policy. Prior to the censorship vote, the prior commissioner asked a city employee to meet him at a restaurant near his place of business.
Well, that's.
During the meeting, the city employee was told that if I would not run for another term as mayor, the commissioner would drop the censorship vote.
Who's the employee? Who's the employee?
The former vice mayor is not here to actually say yes or no. So I am not going, that's for me at this point, that's hearsay, because Commissioner Kyle Becker, former Commissioner, Vice Mayor Kyle Becker is not here to actually say he did or he didn't.
Correct. Who, if it's not you two, then it had to be him.
No.
Who else did the censorship? Okay, then who did it?
He Well, the censorship, when it was first introduced, actually uh, our attorney helped write this up. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
If you mean, was it sent to me for editing? Yes. I edited it so it would read like a resolution or a.
There's your answer. Oh, okay. You're right.
I believe that if we voted on the censorship, we agreed to the contents of the censorship. And uh, I am not going to take the hearsay about the employee, because I would, you would not accept it by anybody else. If someone had said, uh, here, I had lunch with the mayor, and this is what he said. Kyle is not here to defend it or to dispute it. So I, I ask that that be stripped from, you know, even being considered, the lunch date that allegedly he had with an employee. Um, if that should have been something that should have been brought up, uh, what, even while Kyle is no longer a sitting commissioner, it should have been, if you felt that was important, then he should have been brought in. But I am not going to be here to dispute, did he have lunch or he did not have lunch? I do not dispute that. I will not even consider it. He is not here to tell me yes or no. And the employee is the employee here.
No.
No. So for me, that's all hearsay right now. Um, so I will put out a motion.
Hold on, I got. Yeah, go ahead.
Putting out that motion, I actually would like to make a motion to table business item number seven, rescinding censor of the mayor, so I personally, myself, can do more research. Because I don't feel comfortable now actually voting on this, because I haven't had a chance to.
I would like to have, before we make that vote, I'd like to um, take the floor if I can.
Sure.
To help educate everybody and provide a great reminder of what we've been through, as well as the facts of what we've been through. We have approved minutes, all unanimously approved. Commissioner Nesta asks, this is June seventh, twenty twenty three. Commissioner Nesta asked for clarification that Attorney Rodriguez is no longer employed by the city, and Mayor Nelson stated as of today. June twenty first, meeting minutes. June seventh, twenty twenty three, motion carried unanimously. Mayor approved that he said that. June twenty first, goes on to say, Commissioner Smith, he said that he was not aware that the attorney was still working. He thought that he, when he resigned, he resigned. Nesta stated that it seemed like theft, that there's an attorney still getting paid and supposedly working for council, but none of the council members are aware of it. On July fifth, those meeting minutes were unanimously approved by the mayor, obviously. August second, Commissioner Becker asked for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty in which a, the motion carried three to one. Those minutes were also approved, August sixteenth unanimously. The mayor approved all of these minutes, saying this is exactly what happened and exactly what he said. He admitted it. To help, again, educate, and let's remind everyone what happened, the video that I'm about to show is, once again, the mayor lying to the public, the voters, and commission about former city of attorney, Michael Rodriguez, no longer being employed by the City of Apopka. And it goes on to say, as of today, as of one thirty. There may be a little uh commercial here, so when I open that, please excuse that. As of today, as of one thirty today, yes. June seventh. June twenty first, this is a video of Mayor Brian Nelson once again getting caught lying to the public, the voters, and the commission. Gotta take ownership for your words. Commissioner Smith stated in awe that we even had attorneys still present. This final video is the censorship, the formal censorship of Mayor Brian Nelson for once again lying to the public, the voters, and the commission. August second. the voters and the commission, August 2nd. Was, the mayor was properly censured for lying. You don't need any more context than what was just provided. The minutes were approved by the mayor lying. He approved that he lied. Commissioner Anderson, I don't know what else you can look into. This is exactly what you'll be looking into tomorrow, the next day, the next day if we table this. No other information is needed, no other information is required. This is exactly what the censure discusses and is exactly what it's about. Your mother, your business owner, you're now a civic leader. Are you okay with lying? It's a question.
Well, it's, I determine how much research I need to do to feel comfortable to vote. Me being a mother, me being a business owner has absolutely nothing to do with me. I have, I have never read that resolution, so I don't feel comfortable voting.
It's unfortunate that you came to this meeting unprepared. That's very unfortunate. Commissioner Smith, I'm surprised that you even showed up for this meeting, to be honest. And I'm surprised that you recuse yourself as well. I feel this vote would have been important for you to do, not only for yourself, but as an educator and as a, as clergy, this would have been important to show and stand with those in honesty and integrity and on, uh, ethics. It's unfortunate that you recuse yourself on this. Commissioner Velazquez, I appreciate you heading this. It's been a busy one. And I know as a mother, as a detective and as a civic leader, you'll make the right decision to not rescind this censure as all these facts show exactly what happened that we relied to and tried to deceive the voters, the public, as well as yourself.
The only thing I will say is that we, we all sit and have our, um, agenda reviews. Um, I'm going to just ask you, during the agenda review, was any of this discussed with you?
Not the resolution, no, I know nothing about the resolution. So this is my first time, that's why I was trying to look at your paper to see what it, so I can read the exact, I don't have a copy of it.
So I, I'm going to, uh, ask our, uh, new chief administrator. When we all sat with you, I know that this was already on the agenda, was that at any point discussed with Commissioner Anderson?
Well, I'm in the same boat as Anderson being new here. So the circumstances around what has happened here, I was not familiar with. So I would not be in a position to be able to give any advice, one way or another.
No, not ask, not in an advice.
Or background either.
Or to give her any information. Was there anybody in your agenda?
I know as much.
It was, but I didn't.
I know as much as is in the packet.
I'm sorry, I.
I know as much as is, as is provided in the packet.
There's nothing more than he's known that I just presented.
I, I didn't hear you. Can you say that again?
I said that I know as much as what was provided in the packet, the agenda packet.
Okay. Uh, well, I know that the agenda review, I mean, we did discuss it. I, I discussed it with you. It was important to me when I saw it on the agenda. Um, and of course, this is why I had all the emails back, uh, the two emails that were important to me with the attorney. Um, because I wanted to, to understand that the findings of the Ethics Commission did not influence or included the censor. So I want the public to understand that these are two separate entities that we're dealing with. Um, we did not send our censorship or what we, uh, when we did this, we did not send that to the Ethics Commission. That was done by a community resident. And so during this process, what was important to me was to understand how would it affect the mayor's request to rescind or to rescind the censorship? So these are two separate items that we are discussing today. And obviously it didn't rise to the level for the commission to find him in violation. But at the same time, they didn't even give him a pass or either, cause they do address. For me, that paragraph on page eight says that pretty much he did, he did, um, make a decision to, um, withdraw, to withhold information from the public, not only from the council members and the public. It is the reason why I am going to remain with my original vote of August 2nd, which is to continue, to leave the sensor for the record. So there is a motion on the table where, uh, Commissioner Anderson is asking for it to be tabled. So I make a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion that the business item number seven, rescinding the censor of Mayor Nelson be tabled to a further, uh, date.
Well, the date would be the next council.
The next council meeting, which is on July 3rd.
July 3rd.
July 3rd, 2024.
So now since Smith has, uh, Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry that I refer to you as Smith, uh, Smith. Commissioner Smith has recruited himself. Does he get to the attorney? Does he get to make a second on the motion or he stays, stands, uh, from the motion?
What, what he's out on, based on his own decision, is to vote on whether to rescind or not rescind the motion. This is a procedural motion about whether we're going to proceed it here or later, so he can vote on this in due time.
Okay, this, this is going to continue, so, um, okay. Starting with Nick Nesta, Commissioner.
Now it needs a second. It needs to be seconded.
Right. Do I have a second on this? Do I have a second on the motion to table to, uh, July 3rd, 2024?
Dies on the floor.
Motion dies. There is no second. Please refrain, I just ask you to just be respectful and please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
So that was just to table it?
Yes.
That was just to table it.
So now there.
Are there any other motions would be the next question?
Okay, so are there any other motions?
So this too then dies on the floor, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion.
Nobody moved an item, so you're good. There, there's nothing else to do.
So.
Now he's still formally censured. Does he have the opportunity to bring it back to the agenda?
Uh, based, again, if you follow Robert's rules, the answer would be yes. If you don't, then that would be whatever rules you want to follow.
Okay, well, that dived on the floor, so we can move on to new business.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next up. On to public hearings, number, ordinance number 3054, second reading.
Ordinance number 3054. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural half to city rural settlement for cer- certain real property located at 2518 House Road, owned by Investments Alliance LLC, comprising 4.17 acres more or less, providing for separability and for an effective date.
Any changes? No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, those public can look for motion to approve or adopt ordinance number 3054.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3055.
Ordinance number 3055. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional to PD planned development district for certain real property located at 2518 House Road, owned by Investments Alliance LLC, comprising 4.17 acres more or less, providing for separability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes? Okay, look for, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, look for motion to approve or adopt ordinance number 3055.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3060.
Ordinance number 3060. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending ordinance 2840, which is known as the Floridian Town Center Planned Development PD. Generally located north of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of State Road 429, comprising 73.93 acres more or less, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, separability, conflicts and an effective date.
Good evening, Commissioner Bobby Howell, Planning Manager, for the record. This is an amendment to ordinance number 2840, uh, which is approved by the city council on August 18th, 2021, which created planned development for the Floridian Town Center. Property is located north of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of State Road 429. The applicant is requesting to amend the ordinance number 2840 to remove several uses from the approved planned development master, master plan, which includes removing hotels as a use from parcel three and permitting commercial uses on this parcel, removing optional flex space office uses from parcel four and revising to prevent multifamily residential uses on this parcel, removing flex space commercial from parcel five and revising to permit hotel commercial uses on this parcel, removing a YMCA as a permitted use from parcel six and revising to permit commercial uses only on this parcel, and removing an assisted living facility from parcel seven and revising to permit only commercial uses on this parcel. Another change is a reduction in minimum parking for multifamily from 1.7 spaces per unit to 1.4, which is still greater than what's permitted by right in the mixed use downtown and mixed use east shore gateway zoning districts. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval on June 11th, 2024, and the recommended motion this evening is to accept first reading of ordinance number 3060 and the associated amendment to the planned development agreement hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 17th, 2024. There were some hard copies of the exhibits to the PD amendment that were put at your place. Uh, those were not put in the packet, uh, we noticed that this morning. So the amendments to the PD amendment, uh, to the amended PD agreement are basically reflected in the master plan. Uh, myself and the applicant is here, I believe they have a brief presentation they would like to share with you this evening. Uh, if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll turn it over to Mr. McCowen, who is representing the applicant.
Good evening, Andrew McCowen, the GAI Consultants, 618 East South Street, Orlando, Florida. So I do have a brief presentation. Um, I will go through it very quickly, given the, uh, late hour. Um, without going into a lot of the details in the master plan, I do want to talk about some of the goals that led to the amendments that we're proposing. And, uh, I also have representatives of the engineer and the owner here for any questions that you may have. And I also want to give an update about the work that has been done on, on the site lately. So, um, as, uh, Mr. Howell did say, we are proposing to reduce the residential program for the site, uh, for a number of reasons, uh, which we're happy to discuss. Um, we are requesting to revise the residential phasing to right-size the two residential phases on parcel four. Uh, we are increasing the non-residential program, uh, including the addition of that new hotel parcel. Uh, and like I said, uh, we're, uh, adjusting the location of that hotel use. And then we are updating the DA to reflect these changes that we're proposing tonight. So the, the drivers of this amendment are the, uh, recent, uh, issues with the multifamily financing market. Uh, really right sizing what can be financed these days is really the goal. Uh, we are going from about 750 down to 600. It'll be two phases of roughly 300 units each. And that is about the right size for this, uh, current market that we're in. Uh, there's a very strong demand for the resident, non-residential uses that we're proposing to increase, including this highly desirable hotel location. So this is a, a recent aerial shot of the site. You can see that, um, a lot of work has been done on the site already under the, the previously approved PD and MDP. Uh, you can see the Floridian Town Center Boulevard has been constructed, uh, kind of terminating in that roundabout. Um, also Kiowa Avenue to the north side of the property has been constructed. And then also some of the master ponds have already been constructed. So a lot of dirt has already been turned and, uh, construction is still underway, uh, on a lot of those items. Uh, this is the, the proposed plan. You see, we're eliminating some of the detail of the old phase one, uh, that was in the original PD. Uh, and we're just removing that to reflect, uh, the recent MDP that we also submitted as, uh, concurrent with this PD. Uh, just for those same reasons that I already mentioned. Uh, this is the hotel parcel that we're proposing to change and, and this is part of the comp plan amendment that is the next item on the agenda. Uh, where we were moving the proposed hotel site from parcel three to parcel five. Parcel five was a residential and mixed use, uh, use in the approved PD and we're proposing that this just be hotel and commercial. Uh, similarly on parcel seven, this was, uh, an HDR site in the current, uh, plan with the assisted living facility. Uh, we are proposing that that also be changed to commercial. And then as, as, uh, Mr. Howell mentioned, the reduction in the parking. And I wanted to get that, get, get through with that real quick to get to your questions if you have any. Like I said, we have a representative, the owner and, uh, the civil engineer here also.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
I'll be becoming a three, six and three, gold and gem bro. Just one quick question, what are the implications with respect to traffic?
Was a traffic study, um, done for this area?
So we updated the traffic generation tables that were included in the PD. Uh, there wasn't a new traffic study done that incorporated, uh, you know, the, the intersection analysis and, and things like that. The, uh, but what I will say is that according to the trip generation rates, the residential is really a main driver of the traffic. And so by reducing the residential, uh, it actually reduces the overall traffic generation for the site, even though we are increasing the commercial somewhat. So, uh, in, in short, we didn't do a, a separate traffic study for this amendment, uh, but we did update the traffic generation tables that are in the, the PD.
Um, so then a question, is Bobby still here?
Yeah.
Oh, when was the last traffic, um, study done on this before?
With the original development plans back in 2021. As Mr. McCowen was saying, it's actually a reduction in the trips. The multifamily really drives it. You're looking at about 10 trips a day for residential. So there's a big decrease in the amount of traffic generated from the residential, uh, decrease in units. Infrastructure's already been built for the site. There's roads going in and out and it's already been handled from that perspective. This went through the Development Review Committee, uh, which comprised of your Public Services Department, Transportation. It's all been reviewed and vetted by them and approved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, if not, look for a motion. Okay, if not, look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand sixty, first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up. Three, ordinance number three thousand sixty-one.
Ordinance number three thousand sixty-one. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan, Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from high-density residential to commercial for certain real property located north of South Fork Drive and north of Dewberry Avenue, owned by Floridian Apopka Phase One Owner LLC, comprising twenty-four point three three acres, more or less, providing for separability and for an effective date.
Thank you for the record, Bobby Howell, planning manager. This is a small-scale future land use amendment, uh, changing the future land use of the property from high-density residential to commercial. Uh, it is a small scale as it's under fifty acres in size as dictated by Florida law. Property is located north of South Fork Drive and north of Dewberry Avenue within the Floridian Town Center P D. That's a tongue twister for me, so I charm my best on that one all the time. Total site is twenty-four point three three acres. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to allow for the potential development of non-residential uses on the parcel, uh, which would be hotel, uh, which is not permitted under the current future land use designation of high-density residential. The Development Review Committee, uh, recommends approval. The planning commission on June eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-four unanimously recommended approval. And the recommended motion this evening is to accept first reading of ordinance number thirty-sixty-one and hold over, hold it over for second reading and adoption on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, myself and Mr. McCown, the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby or the applicant? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand sixty-one and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Second, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand sixty-three.
Ordinance number three thousand sixty-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the code ordinances for the City of Apopka, Florida, by clarifying procedures and issuing civil citations for code violations, providing authority to establish a fine schedule for civil citations, repealing conflicting code provisions related to code enforcement procedures, providing for codification, separability conflicts, and an effective date.
Captain Brick. Mayor, council. Uh, this is fairly straightforward. When the, uh, ordinance was overhauled, uh, last year to include the, uh, ability for code enforcement to issue citations, there were some discrepancies with Florida law on review of the attorneys from, uh, Mr. Shepherd's office. Uh, they were corrected. This ordinance, along with the accompanying resolutions, allow for the police department and code enforcement to move forward with issuing those citations. And as you recall, this was primarily about the means to enforce the, um, the noise ordinance. But we, it, it also has additional applications in, uh, for other minor code enforcement violations that maybe we can reduce. And, and Commissioner Nesta, you can vouch for the, um, the, the dockets get kind of large for our code enforcement hearings. So we're hoping that this may also reduce the number of, of cases that go to a hearing. Um, so the staff recommendation is to approve ordinance thirty-sixty-three, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption on July third.
Any, any questions for Captain Brick? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand sixty-three at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, establishing code enforcement citation fines.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing and adopting the classes of violations and schedule of fines for simple citations issued for violations of the City of Apopka's code of ordinances, providing for conflict, separability, and an effective date.
Captain Brick.
Okay, as mentioned previously, this resolution just lists the classes along with applicable fines for the citation program. We pulled it out of the ordinance and did this by resolution, uh, to, uh, streamline any future changes and, and make it easier. Should we need to change the fines of the statutes change, we don't have to go back and change the ordinance. Um, so, uh, staff recommendation is to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen at first reading, hold over for a second reading and adoption on July third.
Any questions for Captain Brick? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, designating Sanovis Bank as the city depository, designating the accounts to be maintained by the city, design, designating officials who are authorized to sign checks, notes, drafts, bills, or of exchange monies, acceptance orders, and other items of any kind, designating officials who are authorized to make endorsements, designating officials authorized to borrow money, setting method of notice of change in officials, establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. Before you, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, we're updating, um, the signature cards authorizing certain city officials to sign on city accounts. We're removing former Commissioner Kyle Becker, and we're adding Commissioner Nadia Anderson, and we're also adding our new city administrator, Jacob Smith.
Okay.
Recommendation is adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
Any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, City Council reports, Commissioner Anderson.
So I just kind of want to just clarify some things, um, in regards to some things that was stated by, uh, Commissioner. Nesta. Um, I'm asking that, um, in regards to my daughter, my family, or my business, that if it's not in term of endearment, please do not reference them in anything. I'm asking for respect and returns to my family to not reference them.
That was a term of endearment. It wasn't meant as a.
I didn't take it as it, so.
Well, it's unfortunate.
Disagree with what it looks like, I ask that you not bring my family, my business, or my daughter into anything regarding the city council. That's first thing. In addition to that, in regards to me being not prepared for the meeting, let's be clear on the timeframe when I received information. My meeting with the administration was on Monday. I received the information, just like you all received the information in regards to the complaint that was filed, all the details. I received that information on Tuesday, Wednesday, around that timeframe. I received another email at four o'clock today with the different, um, information regarding what the email that you sent at four o'clock today. We had a meeting at six o'clock today. So referencing that, I was not prepared for information that I just received. And my meeting was prior to everyone's meeting. So I received the information.
What time was you meet on Monday?
It was at one o'clock.
Okay, so I'm at two. We all get the same information Friday night.
I did not receive this, I did not receive my information until after the meeting.
You may not look at it, it was all available online.
Our meeting was on Monday. Our meeting was on Monday.
Your work weekends?
My meeting was on Monday. This Monday was our meeting.
Correct.
They sent the email on Wednesday. Wednesday.
Your packet is available Friday to look at.
Information that he sent us, the email, we received on Wednesday.
That offered no new information.
It, for me, it did. For me, it did. It was clarification from the attorney. Your opinion and attorney's opinion is two different type of opinions. I leave on the attorney's opinion.
You still were unprepared.
But that's.
We all got to do our homework.
That is your, your opinion.
We all got to do our homework.
A lot of times I feel that you're not prepared.
That's fine, we all got to do our homework.
That's, that's, that's your opinion.
No, it's facts.
Let's be very clear.
We all got to do our homework.
Very clear. Never reference my daughter, my business, or my family. We, we're clear on that, correct?
Do the homework.
We're clear on that?
Do the homework.
Are we clear on that?
Do the homework.
Are we clear on that?
Show up to a fire department.
Are you clear on that?
For the resolution.
Are, are we clear on that?
I'm not answering it.
Okay, so you're refusing to. Is that, is, is accurate? Is you refusing not to mention my daughter, my family, or my business? Is that clear? No. I have nothing else.
Commissioner Velazquez. You think it's funny, don't you? Commissioner Nesta.
No. Don't bring my daughter up. My daughter is off limits.
All right, Commissioner Velazquez, what do you got?
Um, I just want to be able to, you know, everyone, we had a shade meeting, uh, with the, uh, the union, not the union, but the city attorney, uh, Mandel, and just wanted to kind of give them a, just a brief, a brief update. Um, this is going back. It's going to go back where the, our city, uh, attorney, uh, Mandel is going to go back to the union. Um, there were some issues, um, uh, at the last union meeting. There was an agreement from the representatives from the fire department and representing, uh, the, the union and the city, and there was some agreement. But today, an email that was received from the fire department president, um, there were some.
Fire union president.
From the union president. There were some additions that were not discussed with our city attorney that is representing us and.
He did not get the, the, the email. So at eight o'clock, we, as city council, got an email. He did not get an email. He got the email when I showed it to him at six o'clock. So he was unprepared.
Right.
Based on what could be a violation of.
Well, it is going to go back for, uh, the union. He's going to sit down with the union again. So at this time, we have nothing, um, to offer or to say about, uh, the union. And that, that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Smith?
Um, we had the Realtors Tour, uh, this week. Uh, the new development is taking place in the city of Apopka that was, uh, very informative and, uh, to encourage our citizens and make sure that our Realtors are aware of what is taking place in our city. Uh, and, uh, attended the Juneteenth celebration on Saturday. Uh, it was a great event, and the more that we do it, the more we'll be able to educate our public and so they understand the significance of Juneteenth. Uh, earlier, uh, there was a statement that was made that when the ethics violation was filed against me, that I was told by the city that they would not supply me an attorney. That was incorrect. The fact is, is that I met with the city attorney, and he advised me that I could either use the city attorney or I could hire my own. And I chose to use my own attorney since I already had one. And so that was what I did. I was not told no. And once I was found, uh, by the ethics committed by not being guilty of the violation, uh, I too came to the city and asked for reimbursement of my attorney fees, and the city reimbursed me of my attorney fees. So that is the fact. Uh, so not sure where the other information came from. Uh, in reference to, uh, the comment was made that it was convenient for me not to have been here uh, on the night that the vote was taken to censor the mayor. I did ask for the vote to be postponed until that, uh, meeting. Uh, but some circumstances came up that I had to be out of town, and I was making arrangements to come back. And, um, I'm sure that you probably were that there are several occasions that I've been out of town and I flew back, uh, to my city council meetings so I could be here at my own expense. Um, but on that particular one, uh, there were some, uh, complications that I was not able to do so. And I called and I spoke to, uh, the city administrator, and they was going to attempt to get me on by Zoom, and our IT person said that that would cause too many problems to do that and asked that I just look at it, uh, on YouTube. So it wasn't convenient that I wasn't here, as it was indicated. Uh, so those are the facts. That's all I have.
Commissioner Nesta.
Definitely, I, uh, want to wish a happy Juneteenth to everyone. Um, glad that we're recognizing it moving forward. I want to make sure moving forward, though, that we don't schedule any meetings on federal holidays. Whether it's workshops, council meetings, we shouldn't be doing any. We should let staff off on federal holidays. We should acknowledge federal holidays moving forward. It's proper, it's correct to do. Um, then the only other thing that I have is, is that I will continue to commit to, uh, doing my homework, showing up to the fire departments and reviewing resolutions and watching all meetings and making sure that I'm prepared at every single meeting that I come to, uh, regardless of the timeline, regardless of anything. That's it, thank you.
All right. Uh, anything, Cliff, you got?
Uh, just to reiterate, uh, I think you all were provided with the latest on Form Six. Uh, for those who underinitiated, Form Six was mandated into, uh, uh, existence for and applicable to all municipal elected officials as well as candidates for office. But a court recently ruled that Form Six as adopted is not constitutional, underscoring the importance of free speech. They found the was compelled speech, which was not supported by compelling governmental rationale or, uh, examples to support why it was the least restrictive means to accomplish the governmental goal of transparency in government. And so put an injunction out that transcends, uh, the enforcement of that form. So by July one, if you haven't already filed Form Six, you, we go back to, according to Florida Commission on Ethics, Form One. Much easier to fill out, much quicker to fill out, but it's still due by Form by July first. So if you haven't already done that, I would urge you to do that. And if anything changes regarding Form Six, I will let you all know. That's it.
Thank you, Cliff. Jacob, anything?
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to bring a little bit of, uh, positivity into the room. I've been here for two weeks. I'm, I've been a Florida resident for two weeks, so, um, it's hot, it's humid. But I'm getting used to it, I actually really enjoy it. Um, I wanted to let all of you commissioners and all mayor know that I, I've had the opportunity to meet with staff, just about every single staff member we have, every department. Uh, we've gone over what they do, what services they provide to the residents. Uh, we've also had a second meeting with all of them to go over budget. And I want you to know that that's my focus right now, is working on that budget, because it is budget season. Uh, you have some great staff here. Uh, they're, they're very straightforward, they're very candid, and that's something that I appreciate. They let me know any issues that they've had intra-interdepartmentally and also with the commissioners as a whole, and how you're perceived. Uh, I'm hoping to be able to take all this and move forward and help with you, all of you, so that we can have a functional government here and so that Apopka can be a great place to live. So I want to reassure everybody that's in here as well. You have some great employees that are providing you services, so trust in them.
Thank you, Jacob. Um, so I'm just real quick, but I have to, have to bring it up. Um, you know, Edward's been gone, you know, over a year now. And even the, the year before he passed away, he, you know, obviously was fighting cancer the whole way. And, you know, former police chief, um, Chuck Vavre stepped in, and I tell you, it was not an easy job, you know. You know, Edward was one of a kind, and everybody loved and admired. And, you know, his, his, you know, his intellect and his compassion, you know, um, he was a tough guy to follow. And, and I'll, I'll say, you know, we had our, we had our disagreements at times, but Chuck hung in there, uh, got a daughter that, you know, is teenager now. And, you know, teenage, teenage girls do what teenager girls do. And, and he hung in there, um, and, uh, worked hard, uh, way more hours than, than, than should have to, to keep us, keep us going until we, we bring, we brought Jacob in. So I know he's out, well, I'm, I'm glad he didn't come tonight, because this would have been a horrible way to go out on. But anyway, I want to, you know, reach out to Chuck Vavre and say, job well done. Thank you for your service to Apopka, not only as a, as the police chief, but as a city administrator for the last, probably, even though he was only relegated that title for six months, for probably the last eighteen months. So thank you, Chuck, for what you've done for the City of Apopka. With that.